Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this March 3, 2021 meeting, North Carolina State Board of Education. I'm Eric Davis, Chair of the Board, and I call this meeting to order. And now welcome fellow Board members, advisors, staff, visitors, online listeners, and Twitter followers. For our visitors and those listening online, our committee meetings and reports will span two days, and tomorrow's meeting will include voting on any items requiring action. March 14 will mark a year where the difficult but necessary decision was made to close our public schools in-person instruction and attendance because of the invasion of the COVID-19 pandemic. During this time, superintendents, teachers, support staffs, and community organizations, DPI staff, and so many others have led the way by developing and creating plans to ensure that the over 1.5 million students had the supports needed during this challenging time. These supports include continuing to feed children, providing devices such as computers and hotspots, holding students harmless from certain requirements due to the pandemic, and creatively developing lessons to keep students engaged while learning remote. The list is endless, and your hard work and dedication is a source of pride and inspiration for all North Carolinians. Schools reopen for the 2020-2021 school year under Plans B or C, a combination of in-person and remote instruction. By the end of this month, we expect all of the public school units in North Carolina are or will be returning students to in-person instruction to finish this school year while managing the needed safety protocols to keep students and educators safe. As we manage our COVID recovery response, we must be deliberate, intentional, and strategic to turn every challenge into an opportunity to continue to improve our students' educational experiences. Working with the state superintendent, DPI staff, superintendents, administrators, and educators across our state, we will continue to develop a comprehensive plan to address the many needs of our educational system that is required in the post-COVID period, using the successful working group structure used during our initial COVID response. We are depending on the support of the General Assembly and federal and community partners to adequately fund this comprehensive response plan. There are many needs, but together in the true partnership, we can respond to the new and existing challenges to create opportunities across North Carolina for every student to receive a sound, basic education. We want to thank every teacher, your staff member, principal, and everyone who have and continue to support our students and their families. You are our lighthouse heroes before, during, and after COVID-19. We celebrate your positive spirit to turn COVID into the many opportunities to address opportunity gaps in our education system. We appreciate your tireless response to answer the call to action to address these challenges, respect the lives lost by extending our condolences to the school communities and families, and commend students, teachers, and other school employees for appreciating and participating in public education to protect and provide the opportunity of promise of a better tomorrow. Board members are reminded that it's our duty to avoid conflicts of interest and the appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of this board. Any member of the board know of any conflict of interest or any appearance of conflict would expect any matters coming before us at this meeting? If so, please state them for the record. During the course of the meeting, you become aware of an actual or apparent conflict of interest? Please bring the matter to the attention of the chair. It will then be your duty to abstain from participating in discussion on the matter and from voting on the matter.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Camnitz.
I need to recuse myself from BizOP 2.
Let the record reflect, Ms. Camnitz has recused herself from BizOP 2. Any other items? Thank you. Board members, you've seen the agenda for over a week and had the opportunity to review it. I ask if there are any requests for changes to the agenda. Hearing none, I request a motion for approval of the agenda as posted. Motion by Ms. White, her second. Second by Vice Chair Duncan. Dr. Townsend Smith, we call the roll to capture the vote.
Yes, sir. Dr. Axon, do I?
Yes.
Ms. Camnitz.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Dr. Tipton Rogers.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Mr. Chastain.
Yes.
Mr. Ford.
Yes.
Lieutenant Governor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Duncan.
Yes.
Eric Davis.
Yes. Motion carries. We have an agenda. Thank you, Board members. We will now proceed to today's committee reports. I note to committee chairs and the audience that all voting on consent and any item requiring action will be completed tomorrow via roll call. I now recognize Mr. James Ford, Chair of the Strategic Planning Committee. Mr. Ford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning to the rest of my fellow Board members. I am, of course, Jamesy Ford, the Chair of the Strategic Planning Committee, joined by my Vice Chair, Ms. Jill Camnitz, and delighted to be able to introduce this presentation for today. Board members, as you are well aware, we have continued to march headlong into the operationalizing of our strategic plan, which seeks to eliminate opportunity gaps, improve school and district performance, and increase educator preparedness to meet the needs of every student. As part of us making real those promises and actualizing those goals, we thought apropos to allow for Ms. Sneha Shah Coltrane to sort of outline for us a successful trajectory in advancing towards some of these goals, which are guided by, of course, our guiding principles of equity and whole child. In the work of the Advanced Learning Gifted Education, we think that there is a lot to be learned from their plan, and I think some insights that could help us as we seek to transform our system to really make good on those three primary goals of our plan. And so, without further ado, I would like for Ms. Sneha Shah Coltrane to provide her insight and present the work of the Equity and Excellence Action Plan.
Good morning, Mr. Ford. This is David Segal, the Deputy Superintendent. Going to quickly introduce Shah Coltrane. As you mentioned, Sneha and her team, Sneha's the Director of Advanced Learning Gifted Ed, extremely valuable asset to not only the agency but to all students in North Carolina, and Sneha and her team are constantly maintaining that critical lens on all students, but specifically on equity and excellence in gifted ed. And we're extremely proud of the Call to Action Guidebook that Ms. Shah Coltrane will be sharing with the Board today, and we feel like, as you mentioned, it is a model for us to review as we scale this up across the state. Ms. Shah Coltrane, thank you for your leadership, and welcome.
Thank you so much, sir, and thank you Chairman Davis, Superintendent Truitt, Mr. Ford, and Ms. Camnitz, and all other Board members and advisors who are here today. It is truly an honor of my entire career to share this work with you today, for we have been on a path, on a journey to realize equity and excellence in gifted education in our state for as long as I've been here, which is close to 14 years, but also even before that here at the department. And so, we look forward today to sharing with you how we are crystallizing this work and doing it with a laser focus. So, our goal for today are really to share with you this multi-year strategic initiative. It is not just a one-time shot. It's not something that we do just in one event. It has taken and will take us a multi-year, many years, multiple years, thank you, to continue to realize equity and excellence in gifted education and advanced learning across our state. We will share with you also today our Call to Action Brief, which some of you have already seen, but we will share with you again today, as well as release today a new expanded guidebook, which really highlights promising practices across the state in your own region's Board members. And then, most importantly, we'll be able to get from you feedback. Your leadership in this effort is incredible, and your feedback will help us to make this initiative even stronger and help us to synergize this work across the state with your initiative as well. As we know, in gifted education and many areas of education, we do have issues of inequities. And while we are not able to solve the larger societal inequities, we must do what we can in our framework, in our circle of influence, to not add to that burden. In fact, we must assure that students' racial, ethnic, economic, or other demographic factors do not reduce their likelihood of access and successful participation in our advanced program. This is our need. We know there's a need. We are not harping on the problem. What we have been doing with this multi-year strategic initiative is focusing on the actions and ensuring that we are moving forward to do what we all can in our sphere of influence. So, starting back in 2008 in particular, we really have spent a lot of time looking at issues of equity in gifted education. We did a PD here. We did something, you know, we looked at some initial data here. We partnered, actually, with a federal grant to help us. We even brought some highlights to the Board a few years ago from across the state. Pitt County, Pitt County's great program, Ms. Camnitz, actually, when she was a Board member, one of their Go Grow programs, we brought here to share with you some of the things that were happening. We tweaked some policies, and we really tried to make a difference. But what we found at this initial stage was with initial efforts, we only got initial impact. We really did not get the sustained, long-reaching impact. What we needed was to come together with more focus. And so, in 2019, 1819, we realized that we had to come together. We realized we actually had a timeframe for improvement. Deanna, next slide, please. This timeframe for improvement are our local AIG plans. Those of you who may be new to the Board may not know this, but locally, districts and charters that choose have three-year plans. Those plans guide gifted education locally. And so, what we wanted to do is we said, okay, we have this unique timeframe for improvement. We also realized that with our stakeholders, that the topic of equity and excellence was more urgent than ever, and there was more will than ever before. We had some policies in place that really kind of brought this foundation together for us. We had already tweaked for the program standards that we had brought to you, how we can crystallize some of the issues with equity and excellence. I remember Ms. Willoughby, when we came a few years ago, and those of you that were here were so pleased that we were starting on this one. We had some promising practices, and we really had significant, we had started really looking at research and guidance. And to use Superintendent Truitt's North Star idea, we realized the stars were aligned, and we had to come together even more clearly and have a clear mission. We realized we must take actions to increase access and opportunity, which as a result will increase achievement and growth for all. But how do we do this? How do we bring it all together? So, we embarked on a call to action, a call to action. This call to action, we had to be incredibly intentional to ensure that it wasn't the sprinkling, it wasn't the random conversations, or every now and then discussing this, but really laser focusing on this topic in a rewrapped way that's accessible, meaningful, and really intentional with our districts and our charters across North Carolina. We realized that we had to develop a framework where lots of different pathways could come together in their own way to really respect local context. How do we do this? We realized we had to do this with three key pieces, and you see this on this graphic. In order for us to truly realize equity and excellence, we focused on, we are focusing on mindsets, policies, and practices. Those three together, from whatever level you are in your sphere of influence, will and must come together to synergize our efforts. Doing those three things with key actions, which we're going to get into in just a moment, will help us realize that. So, we embarked on a multi-year strategic initiative focusing on mindsets, policies, and practices. So, last year, pre-COVID, if we can think that far back, pre-COVID, we launched this initiative. In year one, we really spent time learning and experiencing. Now, yes, by the end of the year, things shifted, but believe it or not, we got in most of our PD this week last year. So, before infamous March 14 happened that Chairman Davis just mentioned, we were able to kind of kick off this initiative where we helped learn and help our district learn for this topic. This year, even with COVID, which actually has made it even more clear the need, we have dug deeper to help districts see examples, have deep conversations with and without COVID, right, with both of those lenses, of how to continue this work. Next year will be the time that we dig in to the data and help them apply because they'll be writing their gifted plan, and then years four to six will be implementation, where we hope to see some big gains in this area. But this framework for improvement gives it sustained effort over time to make change. Before we go on, I did want to share with you that throughout the presentation, you will see various quotes. This work has gained a lot of national attention. We're one of the first state education agencies to embark on this type of call to action and gifted education with such clarity and such a crystallized message. And so, you'll see some quotes from national experts from across the state in support of this work. Actually, at the National Convention, two Novembers ago, somebody said, why didn't we think of this? And I said, well, come on board. There's always room for you to come on and help us and the team. So, now let's go to our last year. One of the biggest things we did was a needs assessment. That needs assessment showed us that with our stakeholders, as well as looking at other research and talking to experts, was that we really needed to focus on mindset. Deanna, you were just great at that next slide. Thank you. And with what we did was understand that it was crucial for us to set the stage. So often, we have a situation where different definitions, different terms bring out different thoughts and reactions. And so, we, in the field of gifted, we needed to set the stage and ensure that we all came at it from a perspective of understanding. So, we actually worked with our districts. We worked with our districts and our charters to develop some key mindset shifts of what it is we're talking about and what it isn't that we're talking about. So, what you'll see here, and we developed a lot of PD around this with our liaisons, is that we talked about how it's not about sacrificing one group of needs over another. It's not about seeing students at risk, but in fact, seeing students at potential, reframing that lens. Deanna, if you don't mind going to the next slide, please. Thank you. It's about providing multiple opportunities and ensuring that our programming and service adapts to students, not looking at a one-size-fits-all model. It's about being a talent scout versus a deficit detector, and we dig into that. How do we, one, meet the needs of students whose talents were easily able to recognize in our typical school settings? But then, at the same time, we must create learning environments to recognize and develop talents of students that are not yet tapped. That's the latent potential. How do we manifest that potential in a way in school settings so that we can see students at potential and move them forward in ways that continue value and develop their strengths and address areas of need in a respectful way? But that mindset is really critical, and we continue to work on that. But setting the stage has really been helpful based on what districts have shared with us, because it helps demystify and helps misperceptions be cleared. So, that way, we can move forward with actions that have some longstanding impact. We also developed some key pieces. What are the key practices that must happen? And so, by looking at several research articles, books, bringing in experts, we came together with six key pieces. These are all things that we've talked about before, but by repackaging it and simplifying, simplifying is not the right word, by clarifying and clearly articulating what, how, and why, it helped to crystallize, that's my word of the day, crystallize, I guess, it helped to really ensure our districts understood what we are doing. We actually developed a one-page brief that's in one of the handbooks that are posted. This one-page brief became our call to action. This rewrapped things and made it easily accessible. Deanna, next slide, please. And it allowed it to be easy to share. Because it was one page, our districts were able to share it with principals, teachers were able to consume it, and it started the conversation in a very accessible way where the stakeholders were. And that was key, is to start where the stakeholders were with how, with what they needed. Through our professional development series, again, series, not just a one-time, one discussion, we held multiple think tanks around these issues. We brought in experts. We dug into data. We discussed the topics. We focused on the why this was important, and then looked at actions. We did follow-up sessions. We did problem-solving sessions. So, we had large group meetings, then problem-solving sessions, where if somebody was grappling with an issue, we talked about it one-on-one. The team, even though we're small, a small team, but we sure are mighty, and they set up office hours with districts to really dig in with those topics. Our second year, which was this year, and we're in this journey together, COVID obviously has been an issue, so that has only heightened our awareness and our urgency and will. Just like your resolution on equity and excellence from a couple of years ago strengthened our will and strengthened our mission, COVID has done the same thing, and in ways that I don't think any of us could have imagined. And so, with that as the background, this sense of urgency has been there, and that we have taken to stride. So, with, right now, what I'd like to do is share with you this guidebook. And today is the official release of this guidebook, and we'll actually be talking about it at the state conference at our keynote in a couple of days. But this guidebook is your second post on the website, I'm sorry, on eBoard. And those of you in the room, I brought some up this morning, so hopefully you have that with you. This guidebook, there it is, is our pride and joy. Ms. White always says sometimes I have lots of theses that I bring to you all, but this is kind of like one of them, Ms. White. In that, what we have done is we took the one-pager and we blew it up. We expanded it and really developed promising practices and annotated bibliography. This is just a start. We hope that we will have even more promising practices to share over the next few years. But our goal this year is to dig deeper and help our districts plan and see how it's actually happening in their own districts. What we have done, and you'll see on the next slide, is we actually have found eight promising practices. Eight's the magic word, and if I were in the room, I'd say, where does eight come from? Our Board has eight, right? We have eight Board regions. And so, what we did was we worked in our eight Board regions, and we found examples for each of the six critical actions. The Board members, you will find equitably represented throughout the state, examples and promising practices of how this can start to actually build in a district and in a charter. And these ideas, what we hope and what we're already seeing, because we're already training on these, and districts are sharing with other districts, is that it sparks an idea. People see it happening, maybe in a like-sized district, in a light geographic area, or they may say, oh, I want to look from Murphy to Manio, right, and look at and see how this can come alive, how these six actions can come alive. So, I do ask you, when you're able, to take a look. We will be sending letters to superintendents next week to let them know how they were highlighted in this bibliography, I'm sorry, in this expanded guidebook, because it is such an honor. And my kudos go to these 48 public school units, who have really already put equity and excellence at the forefront of their work. And it's just so important that we share that work. We also have in here annotated bibliography, which we all know teachers, districts, it's hard to keep up with the research. I can barely keep up with the research. And so, we actually brought some experts in to help us develop the really, to help, once again, crystallize, summarize key pieces of evidence and resources. That way, when there's somebody that asks a question and doesn't understand how this is tied in, they can really see it. And for different stakeholders, that's really important for us to share. Also, part of this year is all of our professional development. We have continued the think tank. In the fall, it was definitely more focused on COVID and that response and sharing some teacher resources that our team had developed. But as soon as the field felt like, okay, we are ready to continue this conversation, we brought it, we focused even more on this work. And what we're doing is helping them take ideas to actions through the guidebooks, but also through planning. We are not only have the think tank series to help them plan and really look at their reality, because it's about how this can come alive in each local area. We give them the framework, and then locally, just like most things we do here, right, whether it be content standards, whether it be program standards, whether it be, whatever we do, we set the framework, and then how it happens has to be locally determined based on local needs and context. So, this is what we're helping them do, not only through professional development, but also through technical assistance and monthly meetups. So, it's a big session with lots of follow-up. Adult learning and adult professional development practice will teach us, right, and tells us that we must have ongoing support to truly integrate. We're doing all that we can and to help our districts in this effort and our charters, and they are just taking it in. And they are just taking it in stride and we're so grateful. We have another institute coming up at the end of March. It's virtual. If any of you board members would like to join, please let me know. We would be happy to have you join and listen in on district sharing and districts learning from each other. So now, next year, where are we next year? Our third year before they write their plans, well, wow, is going to be when they write their plans. Before their AIG plans are due to us, summer of '22. So we will be really helping them dig into data, integrating these actions into their plans, and really ensuring all of our resources and professional development and support go through the lens of mindsets, policies, and practices, because we know all three must energize together. I do want to kind of share with you how the data dives are happening. Because we at the agency, sometimes we all in education throw out numbers. And we don't take the time, really seek out the numbers, to study the numbers and analyze them so they become more than just numbers. We almost do, a lot of, some research has come out lately about data gazing. And how if you just do data gazing, it actually sometimes can be harmful because it's reinforcing stereotypes. How do we instead really dive into the data from a responsive and meaningful lens?
Ms. Shaw Coltrane, I apologize for cutting in on you, but I don't think I'm alone. Whoever is WST, can we please go on mute? That is incredibly distracting. And so if that's possible, I appreciate that. And I know we're kind of running a little bit long on time here.
One more minute.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Absolutely. So as a result, we've, you'll see on the next two slides, just some examples of what we're doing as well to really help our districts then in turn do it themselves. Where ourselves digging in, look, overlaying different sets of data and asking those questions so that way we can maybe develop a dashboard for our district. Deanna, if you don't mind, just quickly looking through those two slides, you'll just see how we're overlaying lots of different data sets from gifted to AP to CCP, all that you have seen before, but we're making an intentional effort of overlaying them together. All of this is to say, we are working with them to truly move and integrate mindsets, policies, and practices. So that way, in the next four years, when they write their plan, we can be hand-in-hand with them to help them in continuous improvement with their local AIG plan and having created this structure. So in fact, we are at the, we are taking slow steps, but meaningful steps with urgency to truly take actions. Deanna, we can go to the next slide. Thank you so much. To increase action for access and opportunity, which in fact will increase achievement and growth for all. And before we go to feedback, Mr. Ford, I do just want to give a shout out to our small but mighty team. Stephanie, Cyrus, Beth Cross, and Chrissy Brown, all are part of this team and have continued to help this work come forward along with other leadership here at DPI. And now I would love feedback or any, any questions to help your work.
Excellent, excellent. An incredibly thorough, as I said from the outset, I think an exemplary presentation that we as a board could learn much from. And so without further ado, board members, do we have any questions or any comments on the, on the presentation as laid out by Ms. Snah, Ms. Snah Shaw Coltrane and her team?
Now, I have a question about reframe your lens. Can, can you explain to me what that phrase means, reframe your lens?
Sure. So often, our own, the idea is that how we see students can truly impact the interventions and the work that we do. So this mindset of, instead of seeing students at risk when they come to us, how do we see their potential? How do we reframe the lens of thinking that, okay, in gifted education, it can only be for a certain number of students versus expanding services? How can we, instead of looking for deficits, really becoming a talent scout? And helping us to create those opportunities to see the best in children? Often in our classrooms, if we're not intentional in how we create classrooms, our teachers of the year do this beautifully. They create environments of varying activities and varying modes of learning, which then you see the best in students in a variety of ways. But if you only teach a certain way, in only one format, you're only going to see the best in certain students. And so how do we reframe our lens and reframe our classrooms in order to bring out the best in students?
I, I understand. I think what I'm kind of confused on, why the word reframe instead of refocus?
Because I don't think, it was a word choicer on that idea. A lot of work has been done and a lot of research projects and that idea reframing how we think about our students. I think you could, other people could use refocus. I think, I think that's a possibility as well, and it was, it was a word choice.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm only asking because I'm trying to make sure I'm not missing anything in the concept. That's the only reason why I'm asking.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Attorney Governor, did, was that adequate response to your question?
It is, it is, yes, yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Mr. Ford, this is Olivia. I have a quick question and a comment. Mr. Ford?
Yep, I'm sorry, I got stuck with the mute button. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Ford, and thank you, Ms. Snah, Snah Shaw Coltrane. I always get so excited when you present because you're enthusiastic and you, you give it your best in terms of very good content. I would, I would also speculate to say that you probably would agree with me that refocusing or reframing and other components of looking at AIG slightly, well, relooking at AIG would do nothing to remove the guardrails around the integrity of, of the meaning, I guess, our classical understanding of traditional understanding of what it means to have an AIG program and the rigor and the intellectualism and the innovation that we expect in those programs. Is that correct?
Absolutely. And that is why we have named this initiative Equity and Excellence. Your resolution is the same thing. We must not lose sight of excellence. And while we focus on equity, and in fact, both are necessary. And in fact, I would say, Dr. Oxendine, that sometimes our classical view has only brought out certain students best. And so how do we not lessen rigor, but expand how we see potential? And that is what we're trying to do, is expanding our opportunities and access so we can really tap into potential that's, some students, it's already manifested for lots of reasons. Some students may not yet have been able to have access to, my students, for example, Jeff, my children, Jeff and I, at home, we have a happy room. You know, we had a book shower where we got every board book possible from Barnes and Noble, I think, that year, right? When both of us were teachers. There are students that may not have a happy room. And so that doesn't mean they may or may not have that potential. So how do we create environments? And yes, speak to children who may have had a happy room, but also ensure that we're bringing out the best in other students so that way we can continue to see more equitable representation in our AP classes, in our CCP classes, et cetera. If we only look at our English speakers, for example, and we have a native speaker, for example, Dr. Oxendine, who may speak a native language at home. And because of the way we recognize gifts and talents, we may miss that student if we don't open up that language barrier. Absolutely, Dr. Oxendine, equity and excellence.
Very good, because I would, in, in five years from today, or 10 years from today, in our AIG classrooms around North Carolina, I, I would hope that an American Indian student, or an African-American student, or a Latino X student, or whatever, or Asian student, or a Asian student from a deprived disadvantaged background, let's say, is being challenged with the same level, level of rigor as, because that would be unethical also, wouldn't it?
Yes, ma'am. And that is what we are striving to do, Dr. Oxendine.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Ford.
Any other comments or questions, board members?
Mr. Ford, this is Catherine Truitt.
Superintendent Truitt, please proceed.
Thank you, thank you so, so much, Snah, for this very clear presentation and for all of the work that you and your team have put into thinking this through. I just want to add that I echo Dr. Oxendine's and your comments and would encourage us to continue, continually check in on this work because I, I think that reframing or refocusing that lens is going to be a very heavy lift. I think we are, we are steeped in tradition in our country about what AIG education means. And I would submit to you that your graphic of what is equity and excellence in gifted education and what is it not? I submit that those bullets should be how all of our systems and education approach what happens in the classroom. So while I do agree that it belongs, it's very appropriate within this document, I also would love to see these, this, this kind of thinking expanded about classroom instruction in general. Thank you.
Absolutely, Superintendent Truitt. And in fact, some of the best work around this comes when it starts in the regular education classroom with all students. And so that's where we start. And I encourage everybody to look at some of the examples of reframing your lens of some of the promising practices. I think you'll be really pleased to start seeing some movement there. So thank you, Superintendent Truitt.
Mr. Ford, this is Keisha Clemmons.
Principal Clemmons, absolutely.
Hey, I just, I just had a comment and then just a quick question. Dr. Snah Coltrane, thank you again for this work. You've made my heart smile because I particularly love how you talked about being a talent scout, not a, I think you said deficit detective. And so I really appreciate that. I think what also is very critical to this work and what I see is about that reframing the lens. And really oftentimes, we do, we want to do the work and put in the practices, but really it starts with us. So I think this really encourages us to think about our own mindset and the mindset of the people that we're working with and our colleagues and really starting there and not skipping over that work. I think that's a critical piece. What I did want to ask, and I apologize if this was in, in the presentation, but as we move forward, I know we've had a lot of changes with having different pathways for identification for AIG. Do we anticipate more changes as far as pathways for identification?
Sure. Thank you so much, Principal Clemmons. Just to let you know, and that I would be happy to give more background at another time with some of our newer board members and advisors. So every district or charter determines their own identification. We provide the minimum standards, which will actually come back to the board about using qualitative and quantitative data, et cetera. But it's really locally determined based on our law. The strength of that is that any school can do what they need to do for their top students. And their top students may be different compared to top students in another district. And that is so key in truly promoting growth and achievement. So I do believe, Principal Clemmons, that we will have some districts continuing to increase pathways of letting students show us their talents in multiple ways, but not putting up multiple barriers. That's one of the key elements here.
Thank you. I, I really was in my head, and I know kind of being a part of that local committee and developing the plans, do have some background knowledge with that. I know oftentimes, you know, in the trenches when our, you know, we're looking at all of the data pieces and the different ways that students can be identified for AIG, oftentimes I know we're still, we are using assessments that may not be as culturally responsive or whatnot. There's been some questions about that. So I didn't know, when it comes to those actual assessments, is there going to be some changes or either encouraging maybe the LEAs to look at specific tests for identification?
So we at the department do not encourage one test over another, Principal Clemmons. However, we do work with districts to understand the topics that you've discussed, to help them kind of ensure that they are, we are being responsive to the needs of the students and to really reflect on those that are being identified and those that aren't and how we can catch some more of what potential is.
Thank you so much. I'm really excited about this work.
Thank you, Principal Clemmons.
Board members, unless there are any other pressing comments or questions for the sake of time, I'm going to ask that we move on. Are there any that are most urgent? Hearing none, allow me again to say thank you, Ms. Shaw Coltrane. And just also allow me to take a point of privilege to echo the comments of Superintendent Truitt in saying that, you know, I think the framework that you have laid out here could be and should be applied to virtually every other aspect of the work that we're doing, right? And the notion of going from the policy, the high level, to the practices, and then ultimately, where really the mindset is the reverse order, rather, but all of those dimensions, I think is something that should be embedded throughout every aspect of the educational experience. And I hope that that's also the connection that the rest of my fellow board members are making in the service of, of our work. So thank you so much and for this presentation. And Dr. Stigall, please forgive me for acknowledging you at the outset. That was not my intention. And with that being said, I'll hand things back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Now, I recognize Mr. Reginald Keenan, Chair of the Healthy Responsible Students Committee. Mr. Keenan?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and everyone else. It's a great honor to be here today. I'm Reggie Keenan, the Chair of the H R Committee, also along with my good partner, Alan Duncan. And today we have an action item. It's the consolidated data report that we will provide and submit annually to the General Assembly. And I think this morning we have Dr. Emery is going to cover that for us with a lot of good detailed information. And again, Ms., Dr. Emery, go ahead if you wish.
Thank you so much, Committee Chair Keenan. And thank you to Board Chair Davis, Superintendent Truitt, all of our board members and advisors here for having us back. Dr. LB and I did not plan to go through this again. Happy to touch on key points. We went through it last month with you. I think the most important things we would want to share again as reminders are that we have expanded the data sets that are in these reports, and we believe they will provide valuable insight as we aggregate, disaggregate in years to come. However, given the lens of COVID that we have experienced, most of this data most of this data doesn't really accurately reflect a typical school year, particularly given that we did not have students onsite from March through June of 192020. And we also anticipate some impact that will look differently again for 2021 as well. I think Dr. LB and I would just pause here and see if there are questions, any place that you, as a board, might want to revisit in this report, and we'll follow your guidance there.
Any questions or comment, anyone? If not, Mr. Chair, that's the report from H.R.'s Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan. I now recognize Ms. Jill Camnitz, Chair of the Student Learning and Achievement Committee. Ms. Camnitz?
Thank you, Chair Davis. I share the responsibility for the work of this committee with my colleague, Dr. Olivia Oxendine. Sorry, Olivia. We've got three items of new business today. Each report is very, very timely and important look at the work we're doing. So we'll start off with the Digital Learning Initiative update. This year has certainly highlighted the importance of this ongoing work, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Wren to start us off. Is she with us today, or is it Ms. Darrow? Ms. Darrow?
Good morning, this is Jill Darrow. Dr. Wren sends her apologies, but I'm going to, Dr. Shalon Kellogg and I are going to share with you this morning. So good morning, Superintendent Truitt, Lieutenant Governor Robinson, Chairman Davis, Vice Chairman Duncan, and all other board members. Today, we will be sharing with you a program, a progress update of the Digital Learning Initiative. To build a holistic ecosystem to effectively set the conditions for digital learning, we must integrate vision, leadership, innovation, technology, student and parent engagement, and educator success. This is the essential consideration is the promise that high-quality digital learning will be available to all, and a concrete roadmap is available to see the goals to completion. In North Carolina, we are fortunate to have the Digital Learning Plan as a roadmap for a set of specific actionable recommendations. We have Dr. Sean Kellogg with the Friday Institute to look at the data points from the 2020 Digital Learning Progress Rubric and evaluation of the plan to help us understand the progress made and current priorities. We also have included specific data points from the Annual Digital Learning Media Inventory Report, completed by each PSU and the school, at the school and district level. The inventory provides insight into access and equity across North Carolina. Lastly, we are going to examine the key points of ongoing support, access, and equity of the digital learning.
Thank you so much, Ms. Darrow. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. My goal today is just to, if you can go back one slide, I'd appreciate it. Thank you so much. Perfect. My goal today is to provide a very quick update on the progress made since 2015 on the goals that were laid out in the Digital Learning Plan. I'm also going to share today some priorities that we've identified supporting schools and districts in the coming year and beyond. As Ms. Darrow mentioned, these updates are informed by existing data points that have been collected as part of the Digital Learning Initiative. And we also conducted interviews and focus groups last fall with over 50 school and district leaders, including superintendents, chief technology officers, principals, instructional technology facilitators, and many other roles. Just as a quick refresher, the Digital Learning Plan was published in 2015, and it was prepared by the Friday Institute for Educational Innovation for the North Carolina State Board of Education and the Department of Public Instruction. The plan outlined a set of goals and recommendations for state-level leadership, action steps for carrying out those recommendations, and metrics that would indicate those actions have been successful. And this presentation is going to focus primarily on action steps that receive funding for implementation within the six key areas of the plan. With respect to progress made on the technology and infrastructure recommendations, the Digital Learning Plan laid out a goal that by 2018, 80% of schools would have digital-ready Wi-Fi. We have well surpassed that goal, and at last count, almost 100% of schools have access to broadband fiber connections, including Wi-Fi access points in every school. North Carolina has also made contract pricing available for Windows, Chromebooks, and Apple devices, but these are already a little dated and are due for a refresh. As for priorities in the coming year, school and district leaders that we spoke to about technology and infrastructure needs frequently cited home and community internet access as a priority for state-level support. They noted that business and community organizations have helped address these needs during the pandemic, but they're also looking to the state to help fill in some of the gaps. Educators that we spoke to also noted that the pandemic accelerated their efforts to ensure that each child has a device, but they could use some guidance and support from the state for how to sustain and leverage these devices that they purchased post-pandemic. To provide that guidance and support for device sustainability, the state could use data on the devices that have actually been purchased by PSU's, because this data would help us assess the extent to which contract pricing has actually resulted in cost savings, helps with planning for future efforts, in that data on devices to help us kind of assess cost savings was actually one of the main goals for the technology and infrastructure recommendations in the Digital Learning Plan. Finally, sustaining these purchases will also require funding, and I'll talk a little bit more about that and the need to maintain the PRC-15 School Technology Funds in the Policy and Funding Section. Human capacity is another area where the Digital Learning Initiative has made significant progress. For example, the Digital Learning Plan recommended that professional development be provided for school and district leaders, and it set a goal for at least one-third of superintendents and at least two principals from every district participate in digital learning professional development opportunities. That's another goal that we far surpassed. As far as two years ago, by 2019, nearly half of superintendents had already participated in Digital Learning Initiative professional development. And at least two principals from nearly 100% of districts had participated in professional learning programs by the North Carolina Digital Learning Initiative. Since 2018, digital teaching and learning has also issued 54 professional learning badges, and both the statewide LMS learning management system and the evaluation system support the use of digital badges. In terms of priorities for moving forward, these include exploring statewide platforms for micro credentialing and additional professional learning opportunities and systems to support highly qualified teachers and administrators. When we spoke with school and district leaders, one area that they cited for needing continued support was for the digital learning teacher competencies and the digital learning student standards. Specifically, they're looking for DPI to provide additional models, resources, and best practices to help with the integration of these teacher competencies and student standards into classroom practice. One of the goals from the Digital Learning Plan was that by the 2019-2020 school year, public schools would have access to well-designed, standards-aligned digital learning resources. On the most recent 2020 Teacher Working Conditions Survey, 86% of teachers reported sufficient access to digital content. The Digital Learning Plan also recommended supporting the use and sharing of high-quality open educational resources. One of the specific action steps from the Digital Learning Plan was to actually procure service for open educational resources. And that recommendation was fulfilled and resulted in the development of the Go Open OER platform, which has been visited by over 33,000 educators. When we spoke with school and district leaders and about their content instruction needs for the coming year and what should be prioritized, a common theme that emerged was support for the cost of digital content that educators have come to rely on since the pandemic. The Digital Learning Plan also recommended that NCTPI implement processes for continuous improvement of the home-based system and develop a multi-year plan. And that work is currently in progress and will be prioritized in the coming year. Local digital learning initiatives. This area of the Digital Learning Plan had actually two primary goals. One was providing grants to support local leadership teams. And the second was providing online courses and a toolkit of resources to support these local digital learning initiatives. A target was set for having one-third of district leaders participate in online and blended North Carolina digital learning course offerings. Again, we've well surpassed that goal. Since 2015, school and district leaders from 100% of districts have participated in these online course offerings. And the Digital Learning Initiative grants have also met all metrics targeted in the Digital Learning Plan. In terms of priorities, one key finding from our interviews with school and district leaders was that the majority are likely to extend or expand their current virtual academy offerings. And that includes into the coming next academic year. And several leaders noted guidance and support would be needed from NCTPI to help districts operate and sustain these virtual academies effectively. Another key theme that emerged from our discussions is in examples of best practices that can be used and adapted by schools and districts as part of their local professional development initiatives. Finally, one final priority for the local digital learning initiative grants moving forward is establish, I'm sorry, establishing evaluation supports for grantees, especially with those with limited capacity to evaluate their own programs. This would help provide feedback for improving their programs, make better use of the grant funding, and then help them improve their programs during implementation, but also to help gather evidence for promising models and best practices that could then be adopted across the state. One specific action step from the Digital Learning Plan was to incorporate the digital learning competencies for teachers and school administrators into the licensure and relicensure and evaluation requirements. And since the 2018-2019 licensure cycle, renewal has included two CEUs specifically for digital learning competencies. And over 20,000 educators met these requirements in the 2019 and in 2020. One priority for the coming year is to provide evaluation tools to help educators know what to look for in the classroom with respect to digital learning teaching competencies, as well as the student standards. And as far as priorities go, one of the goals for policy and funding in the Digital Learning Plan was that sustainable funding models would exist to allow for long-term planning. When we spoke with school and district leaders about state-level supports for digital learning, the need for sufficient and predictable funding sources was a dominant theme. And when asked about priorities for funding, the need for additional instructional, the need for additional funding to support the hiring of instructional technology facilitators was frequently cited and a key priority. So therefore, in the coming year, one priority for policy and funding is advocating for the continuation of the PRC-15 School Technology Funds. School and district leaders especially expressed serious concerns about their ability to plan for and support digital learning without these funds. Finally, one of the primary goals in the regional and state support section, the last section of the Digital Learning Plan, was that districts would demonstrate growth on the Digital Learning Progress Rubric. On the 2020 Progress Rubric, and we still are working on analyzing that data, but we looked at some of the high-level findings from it. Districts have in fact reported growth in all areas, with the exception of data and assessment. One area in which districts reporting making the most growth was content and instruction. For example, 62% of districts were rated as advanced or target, and this is based on their reported progress on specific rubric indicators, such as access to digital content, students' internet learning, and learning management systems. Finally, priorities. The Digital Learning Plan laid out a pretty realistic set of measures and methods for monitoring the progress of the work. Some of these were put in place, but some of them were not. Moving forward, the Digital Learning Initiative should prioritize the development of a continuous improvement plan to help better monitor implementation of the work and related programs, and to help assess overall progress. Also, finally, since 2015, there's been a major turnover in leadership on the digital learning work. As a result, a current priority is to reestablish the Digital Learning Collaborative that was recommended in the plan. Specifically, the plan recommended a management structure, including an executive committee with representation from NCTPI, the Friday Institute, the Lee Foundation, the principal superintendent, school boards associations, advisory board representation from all stakeholder groups as well. And then one final note before I hand it back over to Ms. Darrow is that the Digital Learning Plan is an extremely comprehensive plan for supporting schools and districts. Among the six key areas that I touched upon today, there's about 20 explicit recommendations and over 60 distinct action steps, most of which are actually still very relevant today. Since the 2015 Digital Learning, since 2015, the Digital Learning Initiative has addressed roughly half of these recommendations, so there's still quite a bit of work left to be done.
Thank you, Dr. Kellogg. Moving on to the Digital Learning and Media Inventory, we will now share a snapshot of the data that has been pulled from this year's report. Prior to 2016, and the current inventory, districts and schools completed the annual media and technology report. In the latter, in the late 2015 and 2016 school year, we collaborated with the Friday Institute to modernize the AMTR and align it to the Digital Learning Plan and Progress Rubric focus areas. This year, the due date was extended to December, and our team also added specific COVID-related items. Our team, in conjunction with the Friday Institute, is also in the progress of refreshing the inventory. And in light of House Bill 79, we feel comfortable with adding the dashboard items. Let's first take a look at the leadership focus area. Within the shared vision element, we asked PSU's to enter if they integrated digital learning in their district's strategic plan. 93% of them reported that they integrate digital learning. We know this is an area for our regional consultants to support and coach those specific PSU's that are not yet integrating digital learning. Across the state, it is reported that there are over 2 million student and staff devices that include wired labs, cafeteria, front office, central service, bus garage, and all other devices. Through the personnel element, we find that there is an average of almost 2,500 devices per technician in each of our districts. Technicians support much more than just devices, and they may include anything like live streaming, interactive boards, audio equipment, networking. It includes all technology. We know that technicians are imperative to our school districts, and that is one of the things that we will talk about in equity. Moving on, also through personnel, public school units indicate the number of school library and media coordinators and instructional technology facilitators. To be target in the Digital Learning Progress Rubric for item L2, each and every school needs two certified positions, one school library media coordinator and one instructional technology facilitator. As Superintendent Truitt shared with the board last month in her long-term North Star priorities, we need to ensure all students have highly qualified, excellent teachers to improve educational outcomes. Both of these positions support all of our teachers and students. Lastly, within leadership, we want to share the funding sources PSU's have used for technology. We find that 85% of PSU's use local funding for anything to do with staff, content, PD, and devices. Here, we also have listed the majority of the funds that are used for technology. Next, we will share with you technology and infrastructure. Our current ADM is over 1.5 million, and PSU's have just over 1.2 million devices that are less than four years old as of last June. We know this June, the number will increase, or decrease, should I say. Through House Bill 1043 and PRC 124, $30 million was appropriated to purchase computers or other electronic devices for use by students in response to COVID-19. This is the first time funds have been specifically earmarked for student devices, and we are most appreciative. PSU's indicated they purchased just over 195,000 student devices. If we do the simple math here, it means that they spent about $155 per device. What this indicates to us is that they used other funds in addition to this $30 million to purchase these 195,000 devices. We asked PSU's to indicate how many take-home devices they would need for the 21-22 school year, and they have reported almost 400,000 devices are needed. At $300 per device, next year, we would need almost $120 million to purchase these devices. If we considered funding a fourth of the ADM annually, this would support school districts' need. Through House Bill 1043 and PRC 126, $5 million was appropriated to purchase computers or other electronic devices for school personnel in response to COVID-19. or other electronic devices for school personnel in response to COVID-19. Over 17,000 devices were purchased for, were purchased for school personnel. Funds here were also supplemented due to the price point of $288 per device, and we know that most personnel devices cost somewhere around $700 per device. In some cases, PSUs purchase other things besides laptops to include webcams for their staff. We also asked PSUs to indicate how many additional staff devices were needed for next school year, and they reported the need of over 44,000 devices. If we provided $700 per device, the estimated need is just over $31 million. We also know that some districts previously only provided their staff desktops, so they didn't have laptops to provide their staffs when emergency learning began last year. Moving to connectivity, we know that this is our primary concern. If you look at this map, we see that there are major gaps in the Northeast and the West. Reported at the school level in question 233, we ask for the percentage of students with home connectivity and find that we have over 17% of our students without connectivity. This tells us that we have a lot of work ahead of us and that we know that hotspots are not a long-term viable solution. Through PRC 127 and House Bill 1043, $1 million was appropriated to improve internet connectivity for students in response to COVID-19. By installing extended reach mobile Wi-Fi gateway routers in school buses, we were able to equip 621 buses with these devices. Through House Bill 1043 and 1105 and PRC 128, $21 million was appropriated to provide community and home mobile hotspot access points. Two, 2090 community hotspots were purchased for PSUs through these funding. We have found that a large portion of the first allocation was moved to PRC 126 and 124 to purchase devices. Also through House Bill 1043 and 1105 and PRC 128, almost 63,000 mobile internet access points were purchased for students. Also know that through these funds, PSUs could not purchase services for these devices. Through other funding sources like NC Student Connect and the 1 Million Project, an additional 32,000 mobile internet hotspots were provided for students. Where hotspots were necessary and appreciated in this emergency, we know that they are not sustainable. Moving to content and instruction, we want to share with you the success of PRC 129 and 166, where we have been able to increase the access to Canvas. Here, we share with you the learning management systems PSUs are using to include mostly Canvas, Google Classroom, and CSO. We know we still have more work to sustain Canvas in the future years. In support of the digital learning progress rubric, much work continues around microcounseling. Digital teaching and learning is partnering with multiple public school units in creating and implementing microc credentials to support personalized demonstrated mastery of learning, development, and sharing of courses. Since the implementation of the DLI grants, we have awarded 36 grants to support the development of microc credentials. This spring, planning is underway for the first pilot of a feedback microcounseling course in the spring of 2021. In digital teaching and learning, home-based supports access through our suite of digital tools and resources that include Power School, GoOpenNC, Canvas, SchoolNet, Learning.com, Imagine Math, and NeSIS. Each spring, we offer a $1 ADM opt-in for public school units for SchoolNet and NeSIS PD. Additionally, our team provides on-demand sessions and quarterly meetups. In support of the implementation of the digital learning standards for students, our team has provided an open online course for educators. We are also partnering with Standards Curriculum Instruction to integrate standards and future standards. For personalized learning, we have four pillars to support competency-based progression, and our team provides regionally-based professional learning. Our professional learning is provided across the state by our regional consultants and innovative learning catalysts to include their ILCPD and their PD podcasts. The digital learning, the digital teaching and learning team has provided the NC Bold series of virtual conferences for the 2021 school year. These are designed to support educators across North Carolina as they develop effective remote and hybrid instruction to meet the learning needs of all students. We are also working with NC Cosen to support our chief technology officers and technology directors to get seal certifications. Of the 750 certifications, North Carolina holds 10% of those certifications. For digital teaching and learning, it's about partnerships, and it takes the community. We are pleased through the growth from the 2015 digital learning progress rubric to the 2020 in many areas. We understand we need to continue work and examine deeper why there's a significant dip within data and assessment. But most importantly, we have to shine a light on the current inequities. The current priorities outlined will be a focus area as we work to provide equity for connectivity, instruction, devices, digital content, and staffing, and continue to move forward with the digital learning goals and online alignment to improved outcomes and highly capable educator in every classroom. Thank you for allowing us to share with you today. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Darrow. Before I turn to my colleagues for questions, I, I just have to comment. I'm sitting here thinking, what in the world would we have done a year ago without the progress that this plan had, has made since 2015? And also without the CARES Act funding to enable us to provide the devices and the instructional support that was needed across the state. But the work that, that remains to be done is, is daunting, and the funding that's going to require to get us where we need to be is daunting, and so we, we need to follow this closely and continue on with the great work that the department is doing in this area. Any questions from my colleagues?
Ms. Camnet, this is Olivia. I do have a couple, quick, very quick questions.
Go ahead, Dr. Ox.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the, the very fine presentation. I want to, if you would, I think it's frame 32, so you don't have to go back too far. I, I would, my question has to do with, but in what area do you, do you, in areas of service and support, do you have the most request? Or demand, I should say?
Dr. Ox, I would say with professional learning. We have most of our requests to provide support around the digital learning competencies.
Right. Okay, that makes sense. And then going back to equity and accessibility, do you have any kind of collaborative or reason, either formally or informally, to partner with, like Spectrum? Because I believe Spectrum provided free internet access during the last 12 months to families or schools, districts, or regions that were without the support.
We've partnered with several different agencies. We've partnered with NC Student Connect, and each public school unit has also had their own individual partnerships. So, you know, depending upon where something like Spectrum is available, PSUs are taking advantage of those opportunities.
Thank you. I didn't mean to highlight one company. It, it just popped in my mind. I've been kind of keeping up with that, and I would hope that, you know, any, in private sector would have an interest to continue the service that has been, has happened during the last 12 months. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Camnet.
Yes, Ms. White?
This is a, just a curiosity question. In the bulletin highlights, the, the dollar amount expended of 30 million to purchase 194,612 student devices. What, what? What is the plan for recapturing those devices? Are they going to be collected at the end of each academic school year and then redistributed? What happens when a student exits the public school system, either by graduation or perhaps through school choice? I am thinking about the difference between a plan such as this, which suggests it really is a gift to the student for their personal use if we're not planning to collect. And then, as technology ages, where, what is the plan for, for meeting the needs of replacing equipment that is dated or needs updates? Just wondering if those things are factored into your current plan?
Yes, ma'am. So each PSU has their own plan for collecting their devices. If it's something like a Chromebook, they may not have to collect it from year to year because it updates on its own, but depending upon each PSU, they do have a collection plan. And then, when it comes to students that leave, they've got an exit process for collecting those devices. We don't consider these devices as gifts. They do need to be, you know, brought back in, and they get cleaned. Whether, depending upon the type of device, they may have to be, if it's a Chromebook, it might need to be power washed. If it's a, you know, an iPad, it may need to be reset and so, and to be refreshed for the next school year. In some cases, high school students may not turn theirs in between their freshman and sophomore years because they may have summer courses. So it just depends on the PSU and the grade levels, and, but they all have collection processes. And if a student doesn't turn in a device, they do have track, tracking capabilities on them. Chromebooks can be tracked through the Google Admin Console, and then iPads can be tracked through Find My iPads, and each PSU is very used to utilizing those resources. If for some reason a student doesn't return it, it could be considered stolen.
Thank you, thank you for those. And so just in, in reference to that, I would suggest that our PSUs across the state maintaining the integrity of state-owned devices would put some strict measures in place to make sure that those devices are, are recaptured and, and redistributed to those in need for, specifically for high school students that might have had access to devices that that student would not be allowed to graduate until either the device is returned or the compensor, compens, what is that word? The equivalency of the price of the device is, is given back to the, the school system. I would even suggest that the same structure be put in place as students change grade level configuration from K5 onto middle school. I just, I just think we need to protect the investment that's, the tremendous investment that has both been needed. So this is not a criticism, it's more of a suggestion that we really protect the investment by the taxpayers of our great state to put this incredible asset and tool in the hands of our students, and that there is an expectation that those will be well-maintained by students and families and returned appropriately.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Any other questions? Hearing none, thank you, Ms. Darrow.
Thank you.
Our next report is a K3 literacy update. Again, critical work that, that we're making progress with, so Ms. Ryan, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Camnet. Good morning, Chair Davis, Vice Chair Duncan, Superintendent Truitt, Lieutenant Governor Robinson, members of the board, colleagues, and stakeholders. Thank you for your time today as the Office of Early Learning provides updates related to our early literacy. After last month's state board meeting, we received an increased amount of positive feedback from various stakeholders about Superintendent Truitt's vision and the updated edit to the reading definition as it is aligned to the Science of Reading for North Carolina. This feedback included the appreciation for the intentional focus, clear purpose, and clarification with the alignment with the B3 reading definition. Your resources should include the updated definition revision for follow-up action for SLA 7 today, and there have been no additional changes since our last presentation there. Additionally, the North Carolina Science of Reading Project survey has been conducted in, in collaboration with our partners from FCRR, the BELT Foundation, and Excel and Ed, and has been shared with select districts and scheduled to close out on March the 6th so we can begin data analysis. To top off the positive stakeholder feedback, Superintendent Truitt coordinated a meeting with members of, from the House, Senate, UNC Systems, SASS, the BELT Foundation, and our very own SLA Chair, Ms. Camnet, to discuss what work the groups are doing aligned to early literacy, and this discussion was powerful and evidenced the focus of support where we were headed as a state. Superintendent shared her, Truitt shared her vision regarding the statewide Science of Reading deployment and sought out input and responded to questions from the group during our time together. We continue to receive emails and calls from partners reaching out and asking how they can support our effort as we wait for further guidance, guidance from General Assembly. Currently, the Read to Achieve legislation is still in discussion with the General Assembly, and we've recently shared a memo with our CAOs and our RTA contacts, updating them as to why we're still on hold with reading camps and statewide PD plans for all pre-K3 teachers. Our 2021 Read to Achieve mid-year assessment data has been submitted to DPI and is currently with our Accountability Division being reviewed. We also are collaborating with Alabama State Department of Education, who recently reached out to collaborate with our team members and learn more about our lessons learned from our multi-vendor approach. And then we are collecting feedback, or have collected feedback, for the pros and cons of the multi versus single vendor environments for the board to review for upcoming discussions and decisions. And I'm happy to report that our current RTA assessment RFP continues to be on schedule. Our project managers and our team members have done a wonderful job and given great feedback for consideration. Since our last report, we've had the opportunity to participate in our multi-state collaboration kickoff meeting and also meet with North Carolina's assigned coach for next steps. We spent time individually and with our team analyzing the baseline state of reading in North Carolina and discussing considerations for potential net, next steps related to reading instruction and EPP alignment. And at this time, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Ms. Ryan?
Ms. Camnet, this is Olivia.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Going back to the frame of the interstate, I'm using the wrong terminology, the multi-state collaboration. At some point, I, I would have an interest in more of a in-depth understanding of that collaboration sometime in the near future.
Absolutely.
So cutting, and the whole concept is very exciting to belong to something such as that around literacy, so a little bit more education would be good. Thank you.
Absolutely, and we are having our second whole group meeting, which is with all the states coming up soon. We've only had one so far, which was the kickoff, and then we did just the North Carolina group. So as we come together to meet for our second gathering, I'll make sure that I continue to give more in-depth information regarding, regarding that process.
Yes, and one, one point that is really of interest to me is, I think that we may be leading the way, I don't know, I want be leading the way. I don't know. I want to think that because I'm a North Carolinian. I want to think that and I believe I'm usually right. So, but I'd like to see if they have anything like a definition of literacy also. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we will move along to our third new business item, which is testing and accountability updates. Several different things here. U.S. Department of Education waiver, the fall beginning of grade three and end of course test data. And I will turn to Dr. Howard for this.
Good morning and thank you, Ms. Camnet. To begin this, this morning, we are going to start with the USCD Flexibility and Waiver that was shared with all states on February 22nd. In that communication, it was noted the difficulty of the pandemic on schools and families and that, that the U.S. Department of Education is committed to supporting state and assessing learning of all students. So when looking at the memo, it's really broken into two parts. And the first is the Accountability and School Identification Waiver availability. And that is where it is appropriate to use the word waiver with respect to accountability and school identification. And what this really includes is the reporting as required federally in our ESSA State Plan, the school performance grades. So this waiver will mean that we will not have to report school performance grades for the 2020-21 school year. We also would not be required federally to report progress on long-term goals and measurements of interim progress or indicators. And those indicators are the components of the school performance grade. We also would not be required to have annual meaningful differentiation amongst schools. And also, we would not be required to positively impact schools by not, if they did not meet the 95% participation requirement. And I'm sure that you will remember that that has been a key conversation in North Carolina over the past several months. And that part was in the waiver that North Carolina submitted on January 21st, seeking relief from that participation requirement. So we were very pleased to see that. So each state that receives the waiver will not identify new comprehensive support improvement schools or targeted support and improvement schools based on this year's school data, but will be required to continue to provide services and support to the previously identified school. The next identification would occur in fall of 2022 based on data from the 2021-22 school year. But as a condition of this waiver, to ensure transparency to parents and to the public, and just as a reminder that this transparency to the parents and republic is part of federal law, anytime there is a waiver associated with the Every Citizens Needs Act, states must publicly report the percentage of students not assessed and that information must be disaggregated by. In the memo, it was also noted that states are encouraged to address other high-stakes testing requirements for this school year. So it's critical to note at this point that testing has not been waived, but it is anticipated that participation will be less than typical in a given school year. And that is why the reporting out of those students who are not assessed. So continuing with that theme, it is required that North Carolina and all states maintain their state and local report cards, including disaggregating all data by student subgroup. So one way to think about this, the accountability report takes test data and applies different rules, if you will, or different measures in North Carolina situation for a school performance grade. We still from this year will have whatever test data we have. And the requirement from the federal government is that data will be reported and it will be disaggregated and it will be published on state and local report cards. In the waiver that North Carolina submitted on January 21st, we actually were asking not to have to report that data for schools. But in the memo from the U.S. Department of Education, that is a requirement. Other than that one difference, the request of North Carolina in the January 21st waiver was really very similar to what ultimately was shared by the U.S. Department of Education. The other conditions of the waiver is that we must report chronic absenteeism, which we already collect and produce through edFacts to the federal government. And as techn- as data is available, we are to report student and education access to technology. So again, just to affirm that assessments have not been waived, there is language in the memo that assess, that addresses that assessment should occur only in safe settings. The department was very clear in stating, as I think that has been shared in, in North Carolina, that testing should not occur in situations where it is not safe to do so. To support this, the U.S. Department of Education suggested some flexibilities. The first two, North Carolina had some conversations about, but they're not feasible for North Carolina. The first one, a shorter version of the test. I'm sure you'll remember a couple of years ago, our psychometricians reduced the length of our test to the point that it cannot be reduced any further in, and maintain reliability and validity. So a shorter version of the test is not an option for North Carolina. Remote administration, we've had many conversations about that over the past several months. And the end conclusion was that was not feasible for North Carolina as well due to security of the test administrations. The last two on this list, we've had lots of conversations and have already made progress in extending the testing window and also extending the testing window for the English Language Proficiency test. So I'm sure you remember that for extending that window, we utilized an existing process, the testing outside the window process for end of course test in the fall, extending that to end of grade tests for the spring and allowing testing to occur through July 5th, 2021, to give all students as much opportunity as possible to participate in the assessment. And we also have already expanded the English Language Proficiency Testing Window by three weeks from what it typically is. We are engaged currently in conversations internally and with our colleagues across the state about possibilities for additional time for that English Language Proficiency Test. I'm sure we're all aware that that is the test that assesses English learners' language proficiency and that information is considered most important and planning instruction for them as we go forward. So we are continuing to engage and see what we can make available that is supportive of efforts of our colleagues across the state. So with regard to next steps, this slide outlines, of course, that typically North Carolina would complete the waiver template that has not been provided by the U.S. Department of Education yet. They are still drafting and I'm sure we can all appreciate they were trying to get the information about this to states as quickly as possible, even though they did not have the template finalized. It also requires a public comment period of 30 days. However, in discussions last week with other states that represented this from the U.S. Department of Education, a state like North Carolina that has already submitted and a waiver request, and we did ours, of course, on January 21st, then the department is now looking at that waiver request and seeing how it lines up with flexibilities and the waivers that the U.S. Department of Education has made available. And the hope is out of that, that we will not have to have an additional public comment period. And we may not actually have to submit the waiver template. We've been in communication twice directly with our representative at the U.S. Department of Education to ask about a timeline for this work. And the response that we received yesterday was they are planning on having these conversations with states next week. So as soon as we hear something more concrete from them and our next steps, then we'll be sure to share that with you. Just as with spring 2020, the next step, of course, after the federal waiver is finalized, would be turning to the state statutes that are in North Carolina law requiring, for example, the school performance grades and the accountability model. So it'll be a very similar process that we had in spring 2020, where we first addressed the federal requirement and then we turn and look at the state requirements. And you'll see that reflected in the recommendation for this agenda item in your materials. So that concludes the presentation part on the USCD waiver and flexibilities. The next part is looking at the fall testing data that we have gathered. So as we all know, in this past school year, students receive instruction either at school or remotely, but variations of this model across the state. And of course, to ensure the safety and health of students and teachers, the testing windows for the end of grade test and for the end of course test and the beginning of grade three reading tests were expanded. It's important to note particularly in looking at the BOG3, that the beginning of grade three reading test is measuring grade three reading content standard. That test is given at the beginning of the year. It has two purposes typically. One is growth. But the original purpose of that task was to give educators at the local level an indication of where students were with respect to grade three content standard. So we would not expect students to do well on that beginning of grade three reading assessment. We expect them to grow and do better when they go through grade three and then take the end of grade. Then we would expect to see their performance improve. We always have some students who score the highest level and we give them credit for that in the accountability system. Once you've achieved proficiency, then you have. But nevertheless, I think that's a good caution once we get to the BOG3 part of this. And just one final note about the BOG3 is that we are closing that testing window on March 12th. Our colleagues across the state are familiar with that timeline and we've had discussions that the purpose of that is to make sure we do not get the BOG3 window too close to the end of grade window. So that is why you're seeing, that is the one window that is a state-produced assessment that is closing. So in looking at all the data this morning, we have a series of notes here about the variability of testing windows and the test participants and instructional modes and the variability in the inside. This is a very important point, particularly if we're looking at smaller subgroup data. I think we all could agree that the smaller number, then the variability that is even greater. The more numbers we have, the more confidence we have, the more robust the data is. So we really would encourage you to consider that in looking at these numbers. So one of the things that we'd also like to share is we do not typically ever actually do analysis on fall and of course test data. And that is primarily because, and of course is data really comes from the fall and the spring. And we do not publish any local data specifically to the fall. We, we do not publish any state data particularly to the fall. The reason we did that this year was because this is just to give an indication, to give some information, particularly to our colleagues across the state. And many times they'll ask us for, how is the state doing? So if, if I were an educational leader in a county in North Carolina and I have my information, I know how my students did, I might be interested in knowing how the rest of the state is doing. And that is one of the purposes of sharing this information. And I think it's very important, as noted in the U.S. Department of Education letter from last week, that the point of this data is to provide support and to target resources. The data we're getting ready to share with you, and I'm sure you've already seen as well, is focused at the state level and is focused at the state board region level. For local conversations, that is best done within the context of local conversations because they know their community. They know when, how their students received instruction, where they can see, received instruction. They have the full context of what happened at the local level. We do not have that. So we're trying to provide information from the state and state board region level that can assist them in their conversations so they can have richer conversations on their next steps and their choices that they make for their students and for their, their community. So with, of course, data from the overview of the file, the first chart that we're looking at here is by state board region and it has the total expected number of tests. So we know how many students should test based on student enrollment in a course. And then we have the number of tests completed and then the percent tested. So the state one total for the fall EOC, and of course, this was the four EOCs, the NC Math 1, NC Math 3, Biology English 2. What you'll see here was 86.3. And I'm not sure what, what you expected, but I think that was much higher than what we expected. And the reports that we had from across the state is, of course, some were very successful in testing their students and did so. So then if we look at breaking this information down by the student subgroup, so we want to be very clear. And one thing in looking at this slide, and I think this is important to remember, looking at all this information, some of our subgroups have a higher population than others, as we all know. So when we're looking at a small population of students, particularly, for example, American Indian, where we have 2,092 expected tests, that's over four tests. So that's not just one test. That's a combination of four tests. And the number completed is 1,701. That data is not as robust to have takeaways, if you will, or to draw conclusions than it would be if we were looking at one of our subgroups that has a higher population to begin with. So I think it is useful to look and see the percent tested. That's part of the purpose is to have that conversation, to think about what possibly might be going on there. But again, I think those conversations are most aptly had at the local level. We then look at the performance, and this is for all four of the EOCs for the fall. And you can see that we've highlighted the English 2. The English 2, one, that is performing most closely to how it performed in 2019. So a couple of notes here. One is to be very, very cautious about the comparison to 2019. Granted, we had 86.3% of expected testers complete their test this fall, but that's not the greater than 95% that we typically have. And we're not real sure, of course, of where we're missing, you know, the performance of those students. So on the one hand, 86.3 is really a good number and that's very impressive. On the other hand, we would really caution us to draw too many conclusions because typically all of the test data is not complete until we get to the end of the year. And that's when we'll have stronger, more robust data. But you can see here, of course, focusing on the not proficient, the differences, and you can see how the not proficient category has gone up. And then the level five, which we noted, you know, of course, has gone down. But again, when we're looking at this, keep in mind particularly being mindful of the subgroup size. So the next several slides go through each one of these tests. English 2, looking at the performance by state board region, and then looking at the disaggregated information. And I'm happy to go through those one by one, but in the interest of time, I will absolutely refer to your, your preference and possibly let you ask me any questions if you have on those. And perhaps we could continue to look at the beginning of grade three reading test.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. I think that if we have questions about that, we'll, these will take them at the end. But I'd say go ahead and move us forward to grade three.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Camnet. So on the beginning of grade three, the first, again, we're looking at the total expected number of tests, the number of tests completed and the percent tested. And this is, this is lower than the 86.3, but I think this is a very respectable 67.7 for the state total, particularly given the circumstances that we notice to many of our schools and communities have been in. We have continually been asked, you know, should we try to give the beginning of grade three reading test? And our response has been that that information is valuable for parents and for teachers who want to know where these students are on the grade three reading content standards now so they can improve going forward. And again, as a reminder, that window does close March 12th. Just like with the EOCs, we also looked at the completion by student subgroup. And again, just calling our attention to those small incises and how very important it is to be mindful of that some of these incises are smaller than others. and how very important it is to be mindful of that some of these incises are smaller than others. And then the performance slide, first you will see that by state board region. And that has very similar information and you can see the shifts. And then of course, the by student subgroup as well. I really think with beginning of grade three, it has to be stressed that that is end of grade expectations. That is not beginning of grade expectations. It's the grade three content standards. So these students may not have necessarily received all of the instruction. I'm sure they have not because that is not the intention, right? Instruction goes across people here. So I think we need to be really cautious whenever we are looking at the BOG three data. The, again, just to close and pause for questions, the importance here in this information is not to take away definitive statements. I think the importance of this is to share kind of where we are, to recognize that we have actually, as a state, have made quite an effort to assess our students and to determine where they are with respect to learning. And perhaps that this information can use, be used particularly to give a local context and also to encourage locals, as I'm sure they will, to look at their, their results and to make choices and decisions regarding providing again resources and support for our students across the state. So thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. Any questions?
Madam Chair, this is Mr. Ford. I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Ford.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Howard, for this data. I know everyone has been long anticipating this and so grateful for your breaking this down. I have what I think are two questions. One is, I want to just state a couple of observations and you let me know kind of yes or no, whether you think that what I'm reading into it is accurate. In terms of the completion rate for these fall EOCs, it appears that the completion rate is lowest for the subgroups of black students, mixed race students being two or more races and low income students, as well as regionally, the regions of the Sandhills at fifty-five percent and the Northeast region at roughly eighty-five, just at eighty-five percent. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much. And the second question is, and you all have, you know, communicated the nuance associated with this and I appreciate that. For like the average parent at home who, you know, is concerned about their student and, and we're just an education stakeholder who wants to know what's going on with education in North Carolina, who doesn't maybe understand variance and completion rates. Can you tell us in very like layperson terms, what, how, how reliable is, what does this really mean for us and how much stock or weight should we put in this as a true measure of where kids are at as they were tested during the pandemic in the fall?
I think that's an excellent question. I will begin by saying that the test instruments themselves, of course, maintain their reliability. And they maintain the validity of that they're measuring the content standards. What has shifted is of course, the opportunity to learn. And everyone is doing an exceptional job of making that as much possible as they can with remote instruction, with face-to-face instruction. We all know the context of this school year. So I think these results really would, as a parent, my takeaway would be that perhaps like everything else in our lives, we're seeing some outcomes from our learning opportunity. And having said that, I just think it's key to stress that everything is being done as much as possible to optimize that learning opportunity. And we know how diligently hard everyone is working to do that. But, but to go from a face-to-face model that had been in place for decades, right, to go to this model this year of this blended learning environment. It's, it's quite an accomplishment that we've been able to do it at all. I think we have to look at these test results within that context. We'll never be able to compare this year to a previous year. I recognize that we're providing that information, but that kind of gives just a, without that comparison to a previous year, without the information on these slides, then there would be no meaning for what the percentages were, correct? And they will never be able to be a comparison for future years as well, for the same reason, because this year is so very, 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 very different. So I, here's what I would say. A usual takeaway from a decrease or an increase in test scores is that perhaps not everything was done that could be done. But in this context of this year, I think everything is being done. And this information kind of grounds us as to where we are to have conversations about where we need to go and providing support and services.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And Madam Chair, if I could sneak one more last question in just in regard to the waiver situation from the feds. And it's a lot of moving pieces and I think that you're right, it's a dynamic environment. Given the stipulations from the federal government of not doing these tests in an unsafe environment and obviously the dilemma over whether we're quote unquote reopening schools or not, but knowing that these must be done in person to achieve the validity, right, of the testing instrument. How do those, how can those two things coexist as we attempt to test the remaining students in the extended testing window?
Right. So I, I think that we're back to our communities that know best where they are and their capability. You know, obviously students that are attending school or participating in the assessment. I think our approach in North Carolina has been throughout the fall as well of, you know, tests where you can under safe condition. And, and I think that would, that would continue. If we, if we were asked, that would be the response that we would give is to test under safe conditions. There is not a federal waiver from assessment, but I think responsibly, we're all acknowledging that there may be some situations where it would not be the best decision to bring a child into a school for an assessment. And I think that's very clearly what the letter says. But, but in good faith, we all know that this information is very helpful and given us a perspective for all of our students and for all of our student populations by subgroup is very important information going forward.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair.
Yes, I think that's Mr. Hall. Mr. Hall, sorry.
Thank you, ma'am. Just some comments and probably more comments than questions. But the first question is the EOC has been extended to July. Am I correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And at that point in time, the, the landscape might look a little bit different when those EOCs are completed. Do we have any way of knowing how many children decided to delay testing until January? I'm sorry, until July?
So, so this test data was as of February ninth. If we were to run all of this analysis today, we would have, these numbers would go up. We would have more students that were participating. And, and we, so we anticipate there to be more between now and July fifth.
Right. That's an important point. That is a real important point to realize and to understand. But also, as I listened today, we shouldn't, should, we shouldn't be overreactive, but we should be concerned. Is that clear? With some of these scores I'm, I'm seeing, as in the Sandhills, that's in the Northeast.
Right. Well, I, I think particularly, Mr. Hall, that in accountability services and looking at test data, we, test data is really intended to provide information, to provide support for conversations. And so with that in mind, how you said it as, and I, and I actually have forgotten now, I apologize exactly what you said, but you kind of captured it as, as pay attention, right?
Yeah.
But do it within the context of this is a pandemic and the instruction was different. Not all students may have had the same opportunity to learn for lots of reasons. And so we don't have quite the same standardization that we've had in previous years or that hopefully we will have in subsequent years. So I, I think I would agree with that.
Okay. And probably my last question is, the waivers that, that the federal government approved, of course, the department head was just confirming, I think, yesterday. The new Department of Ed Secretary was approved yesterday. Do you think, and that might change now that he is in the seat in DC?
So I, I do not know. In the conversations that we had last week with representatives of the US Department of Education, they did not give us the impression that they had had any conversations with Secretary, what is now Secretary Cordona. You know, it's hard to look into a crystal ball, so I'm not sure, but I would not necessarily anticipate that.
Yeah. The data that you presented today on the waivers, have they already been sent out to school districts? Or they are, that the ninety-five percent rule? But I've heard more and more comments about anything else. Has it been sent out to them?
Yes, we posted the, the, the letter from the US Department of Education and our communication with our local testing and accountability coordinators. We also held a webinar on Friday where we basically shared much of the same information that I've shared with you this morning, not on the fall EOC data, but on the flexibilities and the waivers around assessments. So, and I believe also it is going to go out in the COVID top ten this week as well. So we are trying to make sure we share that information.
Okay. Thank you so much, Doc, for your info. I commend you and your staff. Generally, testing issues, it's not easy. Easy. And I always remember those days. But you and your staff is doing a great job in trying to put it together. And you, you mentioned something about the crystal ball. It is looking into a crystal ball, to my opinion, and trying to decide on whether or not what you're seeing is for real or is it amazing. But I thank you. I thank you so much for putting it together. And maybe can I open up a, a paper here that I get? It'd be allowed to be a little bit, a newspaper. It'll be a little bit different, I believe.
Well, thank you for those kind comments and I know that our team greatly appreciates that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions for Dr. Howard before we move on? We need to move ahead if we can. Thank you, Dr. Howard. We've all been anxiously awaiting both of those pieces of, both of the parts of your report. So thanks so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to, we have four items that are action on first read. The first one, SLA one is mathematics textbook adoption for grades nine through twelve and career and technical education. I believe this is Dr. Fair.
Yes. Good morning. Chairman Davis, Vice Chair Duncan, Lieutenant Governor Robinson, State Superintendent Truitt, Board members and advisors. Good afternoon to you. Today, I'm presenting the two thousand twenty-one invitation to submit textbooks for evaluation adoption in North Carolina for grades nine, twelve mathematics and career and technical education. I'll start with the status update on the actual adoption process. Although you approved the process for the evaluation adoption of these two content areas last March, textbook commission leaders recommended postponing the process indefinitely due to the pandemic and public gathering restrictions. Approximately one year after the postponement, the textbook commission would like to resume the process upon your approval of the invitation. As you may know, the invitation is the call for publishers to submit bids and it includes all of the guidelines and submission parameters for the publishers who want to participate in that process. The invitation sets the stage for the evaluation of bid submissions. And during the time of evaluations, the commissioners and advisors review submissions for the alignment to content standards and quality criteria. After evaluation activities, the textbook commissions provide a list of recommended materials for adoption to the board. The end result is a list of state-approved, high-quality, standards-aligned instructional materials at the lowest cost possible in the nation. There are few process design updates to share. During the past year, the digital teaching and learning division has been assisting the textbook commission in preparing to conduct a virtual evaluation. DPI will use the WebEx meeting platform for commission and evaluation meetings. A new Google site will be used as the NC site for publishers to submit required bid documents and sample materials for evaluation. The textbook commission is requesting to resume the textbook evaluation and adoption process. The redesign process will start with publishers submitting bid proposals and bid sample materials. Textbook commissioners and advisors will review and evaluate bid materials and then make recommendations for the state adoptive list. On the next slide, I want to highlight a few of the policies that support the adoption process. But first, we'll look at the tentative schedule, which will shows you the various dates and activities that will occur when the process resumes. And this consists of meetings that the textbook commission will have to plan for the evaluation, activities that will involve the publishers submitting their bids and their samples, and then of course, the evaluation and deliberation sessions. DPI consultants who are experts in the content areas of mathematics and career and technical education developed evaluation criteria that's aligned to the standards in their content areas. The criteria is included in the invitation document that you have access to. Commission members and advisors are trained to use the criteria sheets so that they can review the materials for high quality. Next slide. Publishers that are registered on the North Carolina Publishers Registry receive notifications and communications about the evaluation and adoption process. These publishers are on a listserv where they receive announcements about meetings and they also receive information about the bid process. The criteria, sorry, that the publisher should not exert undue pressure for board members, textbook commission members, textbook evaluation advisors, or DPI staff. And in this process, undue pressure is the process where personal contact is made to advocate for the selection of specific books or specific materials that are considered as a bid submission. It does not include social contact, presentations, or any written communication that publishers may have for reconsideration or clarification though. So there are other fundamental considerations for this process. And that would be from the time the invitation is approved until a list of textbooks is adopted. The key stakeholders you see listed here may not meet privately with any publisher's representatives. This item is presented as action on first reading to allow time for publishers to develop their sample materials and time for commission members to recruit advisors to prepare to begin this summer. Materials adopted in this particular cycle will be available beginning the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And so our recommendation is that the state board approve to resume the process for the evaluation adoption of textbooks for nine, twelve math and CTE. And is also recommended that board members approve the two thousand twenty-one invitation. So I'll stop and ask, are there any questions that I can answer for you?
Thank you, Doc. Any questions? Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Moving on to SLA two, English language development standards. I believe this is Dr. Day.
Yes. Good afternoon, Chairman Davis, Vice Chair Duncan, Lieutenant Governor Robinson, Superintendent of Public Instruction Catherine Truitt, members of the board and guests. Under the supportive leadership of Dr. David Stegall, Deputy Superintendent of Innovation, I am joined today by Dr. Angie Mullenex, Director of K-12 Academics and Innovation Strategy, Dr. Damian Lewis, Section Chief for English Language Arts and Languages, and the English as a Second Language Title III Team. My name is Christy Day and I serve as the Assistant Director for K-12 Standards Curriculum and Instruction. Today, we are pleased to bring forward our recommendations for the North Carolina English Language Development, or ELD, standard course of study. I will now hand it over to Dr. Lewis for a brief overview of the history of ELD standards in North Carolina. in North Carolina.
Thank you for that welcome and introduction, Dr. Day. Before we discuss the proposed standards, we will take a moment to review the history of these standards in North Carolina. State Board of Education Policy SCOS 13 specifies English language development standards as a part of the North Carolina Standard Course of Study. Prior to June of 2008, instruction for English learners was guided by the state's own ELD standards. The former NCELD standards were subsequently replaced through our formal adoption of the WEDA ELD standards during the 2008-2009 school year. Because the standards adoption and the availability of aligned assessments and services, North Carolina became a member of the WEDA Consortium. The WEDA Consortium is comprised of 40 states, territories, and federal agencies, including the Department of Defense, who share English language standards and assessments that are aligned to those standards. Now, since 2008, North Carolina has benefited greatly from membership in the WEDA Consortium. Through the alignment of standards and testing, multi-state collaboration, and consistency, WEDA has supported North Carolina with providing equitable education to all English learners. The WEDA standards were developed by a research team at the University of Wisconsin. In conjunction with SEAs, educators, and other stakeholder groups, these standards address the latest theories, policies, and practices relative to the instruction and development of English learners. We will provide more information on the standards over the next few slides. According to the various federal legislation, including Title I, Title III, and Title VI, states must identify through standardized entrance criteria all possible ELs within 30 days of enrollment and annually assess identified ELs on foreign language domains, utilizing a standardized exit criterion. Now, North Carolina test board, excuse me, North Carolina State Board Policy Test 11 specifies the WAPT and the WEDA screener as the state identified English learner proficiency identification assessments. The policy also names access for ELs as the state identified English learner proficiency assessment. Beginning with the 2008 WEDA standards adoption, North Carolina aligned ELD standards, instruction, and assessments. As a part of the consortium membership, we receive a number of professional learning units, including virtual, asynchronous, and synchronous online courses, as well as face-to-face opportunities. WEDA also offers a national conference and numerous resources that are aligned to the WEDA ELD standards. Our ESL Title III team members continue to serve on a number of WEDA committees, which allowed North Carolina to have a voice during the standards revision process. In addition, collaboration among consortium member states leads to a level of consistency for student support, idea sharing, and testing. All of this leads to greater equity and access for our English learners. If you'll go back to this previous slide. Thank you. As we just mentioned, WEDA has historically grounded its work in language development standards as a driver of equity for English learners. The 2020 edition of the WEDA standards reflects that continued commitment. These standards uphold the goal of increasing equity for English learners by setting high expectations for all students, as well as providing common and visible language expectations in relation to grade-level academic content. The 2020 WEDA ELD standards align with the state board's resolution to support equity and excellence in public education, as well as DPI's commitment to serving all students. Now, by leveraging the unique access of English learners, the 2020 WEDA ELD standards elevate diverse cultural, linguistic, educational, and other background traits that must be considered as students are providing avenues for access to quality learning opportunities in all areas. English learners are best served when they learn content and language together in linguistically and culturally sustained ways. The standards framework promotes this type of content-driven language learning. Systematic, explicit, and sustained language development across standards and grade bands is a foundational piece of the 2020 WEDA ELD standards. Educators can use this, these research base, carefully sequence standards as the basis for their instruction, as well as a guide for their English learner's language growth. Let's take a look at the 2020 ELD standards. While the WEDA ELD standards have stayed the same, they have been enhanced by the addition of new and expanded resources to ensure alignment with current policy, theory, and practice. These five statements continue to illustrate language use in the service of learning. In other words, the language for thinking and doing. You will know here that Standard 1 specifically addresses the expectation that English learners will communicate for social and instructional purposes. Thus, a foundation is established regarding the equitable integration of English learners within all academic settings. This is further exemplified by Standards 2 through 5, wherein the expectation regarding English learners and their language development in the core content areas is noted for English Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, and Social Studies. As we proceed into the next section, we will further discuss how the 2020 WEDA ELD standards will impact learning across all content areas.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. As I mentioned, the ELD standards stand across different content areas. Given its broad scope and applicability, Standard 1, Language for Social and Instructional Purposes, is presented in two wide-ranging spans, the first for grades K-3 and the second for grades 4-12. Language Expectations and Functions for Standard 1 can be readily interwoven or paired with those in Standards 2 through 5, the Language for Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, and Social Studies. The pairing of Standard 1 with Standards 2 through 5 reminds us that students communicate as part of disciplinary learning, but also to convey personal needs and wants, to affirm their own identities, and to form and maintain relationships. From the overarching standard statements that we just discussed, the 2020 WEDA standards now narrow into grade band-specific language expectations. One notable change with the updated standards is the nomenclature seen here. This is very similar to what educators generally find in academic content standards. From the content educator point of view, the 2020 WEDA standards are closely aligned to the content area standards, which aids in bringing a high level of language accessibility and equity in the classroom. For example, when looking at ELA standard W dot three dot three, which is writing narratives in third grade, students are expected to write a narrative to develop a real or imagined experience using effective techniques, descriptive details, and clear event sequences. The ELD standard noted on the slide above very closely aligns with that ELA standard, both in content and in the way it is written. Notice that this ELD standard is for Language Arts for the two, three grade band. The terms narrative and expressive in the standard notates that students are expected to write, discuss, or represent a narrative. The specifics of that expectation are given in the bullet points, which very closely align with the expectations of the ELA standard W dot three dot three. We are pleased to see the ELD standards represented in such an explicit way, particularly for content area teachers who recognize and are accustomed to this design, thus making them accessible and equitable. Once adopted, the ELD standards will follow the traditional model of standards installation and implementation. The ESL Title III team will facilitate the installation phase scheduled to begin at approval. This phase will be in place until late June 2022. Initial implementation will occur during the 22-23 school year. The materials adoption process will tentatively begin in 2022 with materials available in 2023. For our DPI internal process, the installation phase is a multifaceted approach. As Dr. Lewis mentioned earlier, WEDA provides a number of support resources. The ESL Title III team will work very closely with educators to also develop and deploy North Carolina-specific support documents. These North Carolina-specific support documents will include, but are not limited to, an unpacking document, a glossary, a crosswalk, and correspondence tables. In these correspondence tables, educators will collaborate to highlight connections between the 2020 ELD standards and other content areas North Carolina standard course of study. All teachers are teachers of English learners. The close integration of content and language invites collaboration among educators as they collectively share the privilege and the responsibility for teaching English learners. Language development is its own field of expertise, just as each discipline is. As content and language teachers dive deeper into standards-based planning and the delivery of instruction, language specialists can help content teachers learn more about language functions and features, and content teachers can help language specialists connect to content learning. A focus on this essential collaborative planning and teaching will be woven into all aspects of support. The ESL Title III DPI team will convene a group of content and ESL educators to design and develop all support documents. During installation, the ESL Title III team will facilitate training and support for PSUs through a variety of ways. We will leverage the excellent work and expertise of the L Support Team, which is a cadre of North Carolina public school educators who possess a strong understanding of theory-based concepts for best practices for English learners. This highly regarded team has been in place for over 10 years. We also use the growing success for L Summer Conference as an avenue for training and support. Internally, we will create a PD plan that will encompass various modes, such as webinars, Q&As, office hours, conference presentations, and regional offerings in conjunction with the regional case managers. A state-level implementation plan will be created and presented to PSU leaders. This plan will assist district and school leaders with local implementation. Throughout the installation and implementation phases, the ESL Title III team will collect and evaluate data in order to pivot our support as needed. We would like to express our appreciation and gratitude for the ESL Title III team, who stands ready and able to launch this important work. WEDA estimates that the new access for L's online test items, based on the 2020 edition, would be operationalized no sooner than 24-25. Given potential changes to the test specifications, a standard-setting study may be needed. It is our pleasure to recommend that this, to the State Board of Education, the adoption of the 2020 edition of the WEDA English Language Development Standards as a North Carolina standard course of study for English language development to be implemented in the 22-23 school year. Thank you for allowing us this time. We are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Day. Any questions, colleagues?
Ms. Cametts, I have a very quick question.
Go ahead, Dr. Cametts.
I would like for you, I don't, I did not jot down the number of the frame, but it is the one that shows the standard and how it's nicely broken down and dissected in terms of what each part represents. It had to do with expressive mode, narrative writing, or narrative whatever. My question is, how is that, how is that assessed? How would a standard like that be assessed?
Within the classroom setting, there would be a lot of formative assessment happening with that standard. And then, when we think about the language proficiency assessment with access, that test is, is very tightly aligned with the WEDA standards that they have updated for the 2020 edition.
So it would not be necessarily requiring the student to do something in writing? Or would it?
The, the mode of communication, they've broken the mode of communications into two pieces, and one piece of that is expressive, and within, within that, they have encompassed writing, speaking, and representing. So writing would be a piece of that, so there would be an expectation for writing, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you again, Ms. Dr. Day. We will move on to SLA 3, Policies Governing Services for Students with Disabilities. Ms. Thomas.
Good afternoon, Chair Davis, Vice Chair Duncan, Lieutenant Governor Robinson, Superintendent Truitt, and members of the board. We are here today, as Ms. Cametts stated, to ask for approval to update, do a technical correction to our policies governing services for children with disabilities, and in particular, an item that's within our specific learning disabilities policy. Next slide. Just as a frame of reference and for context, our policies governing services for children with disabilities, which is our North Carolina special ed policies, is aligned with IDEA, and about 90% of our policies in that document are verbatim from the Federal Register, which is the authority for IDEA. And so, we, we are moving to one more place where we would like to have that verbatim language. Next slide. The reason we are asking for this technical correction is that we have had a state agency or an SEA state complaint that has been filed, and there has been corrective action against the state, and therefore, we, we are in the mode of corrective action. State Complaint 20043 was filed against the SEA, which was a systemic complaint that covered all PSUs in North Carolina, and it regarded or was focused on child find process, and in particular, that the process had been inhibited. We were found, we found the SEA as to have a potential risk and therefore resulted in a non-compliance and corrective action ordered for statewide implementation. During the revision, excuse me, not revision, during the inquiry or the investigation of State Complaint 20043, there were no individual students who were identified specifically. However, there was a finding that child find might have been delayed across our public school units. And so therefore, the corrective action that was ordered is to address child find issues at the state level and the student level based on the identified risk that I mentioned previously. Additionally, state complaints have been received and reviewed prior to and after State Complaint 20043. Each of those complaints has been investigated, and no complaint has been dismissed that had evidence of non-compliance or procedural violations. Public school unit systemic complaints have also been filed and were found to have non-compliance issues. Corrective action in some of these cases was the same as has been ordered through the SEA Systemic State Complaint 20043. So therefore, no additional action in some cases has been ordered because the corrective action would be the same as has already been ordered. Because this corrective action covers those, those violations, we, we did not repeat that. In other words, also identical, excuse me, individual student complaints are and have been filed before and after this systemic SEA complaint, and they have been fully investigated, and corrective action has been ordered as appropriate. I'm now going to turn it over to our Section Chief for Policy Monitoring and Audit, Carolyn Hutchins, who's going to talk through this technical correction request.
Thank you. As Ms. Thomas shared, our North Carolina policies restate the regulations almost verbatim. The paragraph on the right of the slide captures the North Carolina policy currently, and with a requested correction included in red. The paragraph on the left of the screen and highlighted in yellow is the federal regulation. To view the regulation and policy in its entirety, SLA Attachment 1 and 2 are included in your board materials and are associated with the requirements for determining the existence of a specific learning disability. The EC, the EC Division is requesting this amendment within the context of technical correction typographical error, because while the strike-throughs on the right include the requirement to request consent for evaluation, it was combined with the referral process for special education. Obtaining consent for evaluation does occur within the referral process. However, to ensure the intent of the regulation was explicit, the EC Division elected to revert back to the federal regulation verbatim, cited a finding of non-compliance because of the combined language, and in an abundance of caution, ordered corrective action, including student-level action to mitigate any potential misapplication of this regulation. In the next slides, Ms. Thomas will discuss the potential impact on students.
Thank you, Carolyn. So as I stated before, in the original SEA complaint that we are asking the corrective changes to be made to policy regarding, there were no specific students identified. We are working heavily with all public school units in our state to verify and clarify and ensure that the corrective actions that we have ordered are put in place, and in particular, that no child who may have been affected is overlooked, and those children will be addressed. will be addressed through the corrective action procedures we've put in place. Next slide. I think I've covered most of this. I'm going to move on, I believe, to the next couple of slides, and let Ms. Hutchins talk about the really crux of the corrective action and the impact that we're trying to make across the state, and the technical assistance that we've provided to our PSUs to make this corrective action.
Every effort has been made to be sensitive to the challenges facing PSUs with the reopening of school buildings and the demands on instructional resources, while ensuring that corrective action is being implemented quickly to ensure that any potential non-compliance is not ongoing. The EC Division has facilitated a number of technical assistance activities to ensure that there are sufficient supports and training available at the local level. Extra effort has been invested in preparing training materials that ensure a cohesive and consistent message from the EC Division to the local district, school, and teacher level through the use of recorded technical assistance videos, supporting materials, and documents. In doing so, the EC Division has assumed the responsibility for developing training materials to enable PSUs to have implementation as its primary focus. A step-by-step implementation timeline has also been provided and was facilitated by chunking the release of information to local leadership with a follow-up virtual EC office hours to clarify any questions prior to the public school unit taking action within its schools. Since corrective action has been ordered in November, two statewide required webinars hosted, were hosted to provide an overview of the complaint and corrective action. A thousand or more participants attended those webinars, and the participants included superintendents, heads of schools, chief academic officers, EC and MTSS leaders. Since January, six EC office hours have been held with an average participation of 75 to 125 participants, and will be ongoing until corrective action is completed. Statewide corrective action will be verified as complete once each public school unit completes the corrective action timeline and provides its written assurance that corrective action has been completed locally. Going forward, as part of the EC Division's requirement to conduct program monitoring through its general supervision authority, the identifications of students with learning disabilities will be a monitoring priority statewide and incorporated in the upcoming As noted, many of the policies governing services for children with disabilities are taken verbatim from the federal regulations. We are working with the NCDPI General Counsel to coordinate the rulemaking process through the Office of Administrative Hearings to ensure that we are not duplicating efforts regarding the authority provided to implement the required regulations. Upon approval by the State Board of Education, this technical correction will be used to revise the current policies. A new copy will be posted on the EC website and provided statewide to EC leadership and others. We have provided communication ahead of the State Board meeting to notify the field of a potential change and to be aware that if approved, the final change will be communicated
So we will be happy to take any questions that you may have at this time. I would like to add that we have done this work with the field in heavy collaboration with our partners in the Integrated Academic and Behavior Support area with the MTSS work, so that it has been a dual-linked partnership, not only from the department, but across the state in our PSUs. We'll be happy to take questions if you have those.
Any questions?
Ms. Cametts, I do have a comment and a question. Question first, and then just a very brief comment afterwards. This is very timely and helpful for me, because I've had, in my region, I've had a couple of questions come my way about the impact, programming impact of the corrective action with respect to possible changes in the MTSS procedure, or I suppose procedure is the best way to describe that. Could you comment on that briefly?
I'll be happy to, Dr. Oxenden. Where the changes or the impact to the multi-tiered system of support comes is within ensuring that parents who have students participating in intervention are made aware of their child's participation in the intervention, and that they have the right at any time to request an evaluation if they suspect that their child's difficulties are a result of a disability. The intersection of those policy in particular with MTSS processes is that in order to identify a child with a specific learning disability, our state moved to a response to intervention model on July 1st of 2020. And therefore, as a result, those communication, documented communication with families regarding the intensity of support provided to their child, and the requirement to ensure that the parent is aware that they have the right to refer a child at any time if they suspect a disability is in place and available with regard to specific learning disabilities.
That's very helpful, because I'm almost having a deja vu. One of my concerns many years ago, and my concern was, was arrested to some degree, is that the MTSS, as, as strong as the theory is, I do appreciate the theory around it, and the, the importance of intervention, I did have this, you know, this lurking fear that, that in reality, it could, the process could slow down what needed to be happening for students who did have a, a true disability and needed to further along in the pipeline toward possible placement.
Yes, Dr. Oxenden, and if I could add to my previous comments, the importance and why the EC Division has elected to take action with this particular policy and reverting back to the federal language is to ensure that when participating in a response to intervention model, if after applying those interventions and the science behind those interventions indicate that after that intervention has been applied with fidelity, and after the reasonable time that was defined by that intervention has passed, if that child has not made progress with that intervention, the language in this regulation provides the affirmative language that not only does the LEA have the obligation to refer that student, but they have the obligation to go ahead and evaluate that student to determine if a specific learning disability is present.
This is Sherry. I would just add that while this expectation has been there, the communication has been there, this policy change, or this, this policy technical correction is just putting it crystal clear as to the expectations now.
That's great. Thank you so much for that clarity.
That's right.
One, just final comment. This is not my area of expertise, but I did want to mention that to staff that I, as a board member, I'm not sure if other board members received this same communication, but we had two letters, one specifically from a parent, and then one from a, a group that suggested that perhaps there had been a complaint that named students specifically as a part of 20-043. And so, just wanting to maintain the integrity of the, the data that we put for the public, I'd like to just put it out there that perhaps we, we go back and investigate these two letters just to make sure that the accuracy of the presentation today is, is maintained. And so, particularly the Literacy Moms NC group, where there were some, particularly of note that some children were named, and I just want to make sure, because that's not my area of expertise, that we go back and just bet out and, and make sure that those complaints are addressed, if that's okay.
Yes, ma'am, and I did allude to that earlier. I am aware of those letters. There has not been a complaint dismissed that had a finding of non-compliance or had a procedural violation. There was not a particular child named in this particular state complaint that has generated the statewide corrective action. There have been previous and more recent state complaints that have identified individual children, and those have been addressed individually, and there have been findings of non-compliance. So there was no child listed in 20043, but there have been individual children corrections that have needed to be made based on the state complaint corrective action.
I would also like to offer, Ms. Thomas, that as a result of Complaint 2043, in addition to the required policy changes, there have been corrective action that applies to all students in North Carolina who may have been participating in interventions, either supplemental or intensive interventions. And those statewide student-level corrective action is underway, and that is consistent with a complainant's request that they consider as a possible remedy that the state intervene on behalf of students who have remained in tier-two and tier-three interventions to require problem-solving teams to consider whether or not a disability is suspected. And we have acknowledged that request and implemented it into corrective action, and that is underway to be certain that we do not have students who are remaining in intervention without problem-solving teams asking whether or not a disability is suspected, and if suspected, referring those students for further evaluation.
And if I could just reiterate again, we do not dismiss state complaints. We are not allowed to do that. It is within our requirements under IDEA and our general supervision. We do not dismiss complaints that have evidence of a non-compliance or a procedural violation.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas and team, for having the opportunity to articulate a response to, to those, that information that we received very late this week before this meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Tom, Ms. Thomas and Ms. Hutchins. I, I hear no more questions. We'll move along to SLA IV. Report to the Joint Legislative Oversight Committee, Implementation and Use of Funds for Summer Learning Programs. Dr. Hempel Joseph.
Thank you so much, Chair Davis, Vice Chair Duncan, esteemed members of the board, Superintendent Truitt, Lieutenant Governor Robinson, advisors and stakeholders. It is absolutely my pleasure this afternoon to present the Executive Summer and JLEC report for the implementation and use of funds for the summer learning program. As we know, the academic deficits and gaps that were created by the COVID-19 pandemic, which began a year ago this month, presented some unprecedented challenges and concerns for our students, their families, educational leaders, and communities. As the realities of our students' deficits and needs, as well as their challenges, continue to arise, the stakeholders responsible for their education began to grapple with the question on how we were going to accurately assess and respond to the academic gaps and deficits once our students returned, and thus, the need for the summer learning program became prevalent. Session Law 2024, House Bill 1043, provided that support for teachers and school leaders as they determined where students were in terms of their progression in literacy and math skills. The following executive summary outlines the $70 million that was provided to support supplemental learning programs for students whose learning was negatively impacted by COVID-19. One thing that we're going to do today is really go through Phase 1, 2, and 3, so that we can see, as we think about the summer learning and summer jumpstart workgroup, the needs that were available not only for supporting our schools and our students, but also the thought process behind the summer jumpstart program overall. So as we move into Phase 1, we see that the summer jumpstart workgroup was formed immediately following the passing, passing of the session law. There were a couple of things that, that workgroup was tasked with creating, which was a draft policy, chart of accounts, and allocation methods, along with very clear guidelines and a unified approach in which they were provided a prescribed template for district planning and reporting. We also utilized that workgroup for workgroup flow and documentations, and they truly brought to the table the considerations for tiered options and longitudinal planning that would be necessary based on DHHS recommendations for the start of the school year. We worked closely with members of the department, stakeholders in the field, external partners to ensure that the workgroup was well-represented by not only school leaders, but also district leaders, content experts, DPI leaders, regional case managers, advisors, and support staff, and we are extremely grateful for each of these stakeholders for their support and guidance of our DPI staff in this critically, extremely critical initiative in the midst of the global pandemic. As we move to the purpose, we will see here that we were really focusing on three subgroups of students in reading K3, reading in the fourth grade, and math through K4. Each public school unit and charter school had to develop a remediation and summer jumpstart plan for the 2020-21 school year to provide that supplemental learning for their students. And we also made sure that we utilized those diagnostic assessments, informal and formal expectations, as well as those expectations that were identified by that student's teachers, as well as their executive leaders the year prior. There were a few required components as well, as we looked at that summer learning program, and the workgroup decided that each of the supplemental learning programs had to have that negative impact by COVID as required in legislation. The second was the compliance with the requirements of any executive order in effect at that time, as well as a budget to demonstrate allocation of funding, which we'll get into in a moment. Also, it's important to note that that summer plan and that supplemental plan had to have resources and strategies that parents and guardians could provide at home for students who qualify for the summer learning program regardless of attendance. Last but not least, it's important to note that of that $70 million that was provided for supplemental learning, that at least 50% of that had to be used to provide reading interventions for students who were in grades 2 and 3 during the 2019-2020 school year, and then from that, up to 25% could be used for supplemental literacy support for students in grades 3 and 4. Those remaining funds also could be used for reading interventions for students who were in grades kindergarten, grade 1, and grade 4, as well as were in math kindergarten through grade 4 the year prior. All funds had to have been used prior to December 31st, 2020. As we move into Phase 2, again, all of our workgroup team leads working together, the DPI leaders here at the department, as well as our amazing regional case management. By June 22nd, 2020, we had 279 remediation and summer jumpstart plans that were received by our department. Three things that were important to note is that those funds were released and given authorization to expend those funds as soon as it was received. So our department did not approve, however, we provided guidance, we answered questions, and made sure that each of the districts and schools had the necessary support to implement their plan, and also districts were authorized to spend after July 1, once we received not only their template, but also their accompanying budget template as well. In January of this year, we moved into Phase 3, which was starting to collect the quantitative and qualitative reporting, as well as feedback from the field on how the implementation of the summer jumpstart program was going, not only in their districts, but also in their respective schools. So we provided on January 12th the report form to the field, as well as a question list, so that the summer jumpstart lead could begin disaggregating and collecting that data, as well as giving us the feedback that we needed to determine implementation and use of funds. What we see here is that by June 22nd, we, or by February 12th, we received 204 remediation and summer jumpstart plans. We have here the data that represents each of the regions from which we receive those plans. We also have in that second slide here, delivery options. And this was really important for us to note, because we wanted to understand whether it was face-to-face instruction, remote instruction, or in those rare cases where districts could not plan face-to-face or remote- not plan face-to-face or remote instruction, how they were able to build capacity for delivering that reading instruction. And then last but not least, we had 48% of our responding districts and schools that decided to use a combination of the models mentioned above in an effort to meet the individual needs of the district. So, as we go into the next phase of the quantitative data, it's important to note that they are responding from those students who were able to return safely based on executive orders and local restrictions to their school districts, as well as those that were able to deliver hybrid models safely. So, we are starting to look here at the numbers, and the first things that we see here for the quantitative report are the number of students who are eligible in kindergarten through grade 3 and grade 4, as well as those students who receive summer jump-start instruction in the summer as well as in the fall. Now, as we start to look at the numbers, it's critical to maintain that each public school unit and charter school utilize diagnostic assessment in the areas of reading and math that met the needs of local restrictions, delivery models used in that school, and availability in their respective jurisdiction. We also have to take into account and note the fluidity of student attendance and transancy from July 2020 to December 2020. So, if we look here at the first column, we see that the number of kindergarten through third-grade students initially eligible for reading were over almost 157,000 students, and then in grades 4, we have over 31,000 students. Now, when we start to look at those students who participated in jump-start reading in the summer, which is again before the start of the academic school year, we were able to reach over 55,000 students. Now, over the course of that time, after students were able to return to instruction in August, we were able to impact with the Summer Learning Jump Start Program 201,000 students. So, very, very, the quantitative data just paints a very, very clear picture about the number of impact that we were able to have with students. Now, let's move to math. In grades K through 4, those that were initially eligible, over 123,000 students, and then those students who were able to participate in the summer when it came to math in grades K through 4, we were able to reach over 41,000 students. In all, by the end of December 31st, 2020 of last year, those students who participated in the fall, we were able to impact over 185,000 students. Now, if you remember in the legislation, it was important to note that parents did have the option of saying that they did not want their students to be able to participate, and that was, again, their decision. So, we wanted to make sure that we elevated that quantitative data. So, for those students who were eligible in reading, we had over 64,000 students whose parents opted out of participation, and then for math, we had a little over 33,000 students whose parents opted out of participation in math. So, we're going to move into the qualitative data report, and it was very important that we walk these two areas side by side in order to understand quantitative impact and then also qualitative feedback. So, we asked a few questions of our jump-start leads and their teams, and we were simply overwhelmed by the amount of data and the details with which we were able to paint a very clear picture about how the Summer Jump Start Program was able to impact our students, our districts, and teaching and learning processes at the school level. In the area of reading for students in kindergarten through third grade, we had 204 respondents to that question, and overall, what we saw, one of the prevalent themes from the responses was that students were able to have confidence and a maintenance of skills in the primary area of success noted by teacher observations and notes. And this is key because over 60% of those responses celebrated the intentionality and strategic implementation of the Jump Start Program as an opportunity to address summer slide, efficacy in literacy skills and support, as well as phonemic awareness and phonics. For the sake of time, we've only highlighted one response here. However, in the report, we have so many different responses from across those regions that are represented in the 204 respondents, and this particular respondent noted that as a result of that programming, we were able to use that knowledge and conduct an ecosystem survey of our K-12 literacy programming to determine if our current foundational skills and reading comprehension programs include all of the necessary components and rigor of a literacy ecosystem in line with the latest science of reading. We are attempting to ask the question that the Science of Reading PD has taught us to ask: Does our literacy programming have all the necessary components to teach kids how to be lovers of reading and readers for content acquisition? So, you see here that the qualitative feedback gives us a much more, is a much more depth and breadth when it comes to how this program and implementation as such has impacted the thinking of leaders on the ground. The next question we asked is in the area of reading for students in fourth grade. The following was given by 204 respondents, and we see that they were forthright in denoting that the fourth graders who attended the program, we have to remember, were transitional students who have been struggling in reading. However, the one-on-one lessons afforded by the teachers helped our fourth graders hone in on decoding and comprehension overall, as well as tailored instruction to meet that instructional gap. The data supports that students were able to truly improve in their text reading level. And we see here, and I'll just highlight this one respondent, who said, "Based on asserted given on day 1, 80% of students had not picked up a book to read since that time," and they are speaking from the time that those students left in March to the time that they were able to return to school in July. By day 12, students felt more confident and prepared for fifth grade. It no longer was about what they missed in fourth grade, but rather about what they already knew walking into their fifth grade year. So, we were very, very grateful for this candid feedback. As we move into the area of math, we asked the question about the student ability and how it was improved based on the Jump Start Program, and it's also important to note that for those schools and districts that deemed math a critical area of growth for their students, they did see high levels of impact and proficiency. Almost 40% of the respondents noted that math was not an area of primary concern, given the current circumstances, and delineated that they were unable to find any statistical impact of students due to the lack of measurement on a specific assessment in their district. Now, as we talk about big wins and celebrations from the implementation of the Summer Jump Start Program, overwhelmingly, respondents were grateful, excited, and humbled by the opportunity to provide and develop a deeper connection with their students and also understand how they could leverage that support in the turbulent and often overwhelming circumstances that COVID presented for these schools and students. Not only did the Jump Start Program allow schools and districts to think strategically, intentionally, about how to reach struggling students, but in many cases, it helped them extend their approach to learning. And this was an opportunity for us to see, in the 204 respondents, we had over 70% who said after December 31st, 2020, they continued some of the efforts and innovative practices that they began in the Summer Jump Start Program well within the school year. One respondent noted that the Jump Start Camp was the first planned instructional endeavor post-quarantine. Challenges were presented in that district, were unable to provide face-to-face instruction to their students, and these challenges became learning experiences for all of the stakeholders involved. I love when this respondent said, "Our planning evolved. Teacher instructional formats and delivery evolved, and our students were given the opportunity to receive small group instruction and remote learning." So, we see here again that the thinking and teaching and learning of our schools has been greatly impacted. And as we wrap up this qualitative report, we did ask schools and districts to describe their challenges. Many of the challenges delineated by respondents were directly related to the operations, as well as access to and connectivity of technology. The timeline of the implementation of the Summer Jump Start Program also coincided with the initial phase of both students and teachers returning to school in August 2020. So, as they were implementing their summer jump-start, they also were realizing some challenges and also how the plans would also speak to student attendance, access to device, implementation of safety measures and protocol, and overall effort and engagement of the community. Of particular concern for a majority of the respondents was the timing of the legislation juxtaposed with the expectation of implementation. We did find that over 50% of the respondents found it challenging to meet the expectations against the backdrop of the students' impending return to some modality of teaching and learning. We see here too, in our last respondent, an example that we elevated in the report, that due to the quick turnaround between the time we received jump-start implementation and the beginning of school, we had to act quickly to identify students, gain commitment from teachers and parents during a time of school closure. Teachers were reluctant to teach summer reading camp because of the short notice, as well as fear of the unknown. All in all, as we look back at our quantitative and qualitative report, we see that we had a robust impact and made a great dent in helping students and schools and their leaders really elevate their thinking and challenge them to utilize the $70 million in order to respond to the initial needs and negative impact of COVID-19. We are grateful for the workgroup, as well as all of the stakeholders, leaders and support staff here at DPI, and most importantly, for our students, our school leaders, district leaders and superintendents on the ground who were able to help us implement the Summer Jump Start Program so effectively, and we thank them for being very candid and clear in their responses and feedback to our report. And at this time, I'll open it up for any questions and feedback.
All right. We are 1 o'clock, so we do need to get to our break, but if there's a burning question here, we'll take it. Anyone have a question about this report? Just quickly, we have three action items. We heard about these three items last month, so I'm just going to outline that we will be also voting on SLA 5, which is a policy amendment, COVID-19 high school graduation requirements; SLA 6, which is also a policy amendment, high school graduation requirements; SLA 7 is the change in the quality reading definition, which we saw last month and has not changed from then to now. So, we will be approving that change in definition. And with that, Chair Davis, I turn it back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Camnitz. We'll now break and return at 1:50. 1:50. Thanks a lot.